What? Did I not read the right agenda?
We gotta find the right type of paper.
It works like a thing you do over there.
By the way, how was your birthday?
Okay.
And is that it? What does that make you now? Oh, no, was it the Big Six Lions? You know, these days they try to sell it to you at like fifty.
Yeah, I'm ready. All right, Kyle, Ed, Kerry, you good? All right, regular meeting of the City Commission for Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen will come to order. Please silence all your cell phones. City Clerk, call the roll.
Mayor Owen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner Colletti.
Here.
Commissioner Sax.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have Police Department Chaplain Pete Carter give the invocation. If you would please rise and remain for the pledge after the invocation.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to assemble and to discuss those things that might serve to make our communities and our city better in the spirit of fairness and equality. We thank you for those who have served the city faithfully in the past, and we ask that you continue to lead and guide those that will make those decisions as we go forth into the future. And as we honor the memory of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice so that we might have this chance to make our mark in the world, let us never forget that freedom, liberty, and justice is for all, and it should be our all sacred goal. Continue to bless this place we call New Smyrna Beach. In your master's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, we do that at the beginning of every meeting, but it feels like it means a little more today, so. Okay. I know of one change. City Attorney emailed us about a change to the agenda, and that is that Item Nine A will be moved to be Item Eight D, and it will be conducted as a public hearing. So Item Nine A will be removed and added as Item Eight D. City Manager, Attorney, any other changes to the agenda?
We have one item under seven administrative items, new business, Item B. They asked to continue this to June eleventh meeting.
Okay.
Just eight oh one Mary Avenue, the right, the other two.
Yeah, just that one, yeah. So eight oh one Mary Avenue request is being requested to continue to a future meeting. Hearing no objections to that. We'll continue that to a meeting to be determined by city staff. Know the changes? All right. We have many honored guests in the form of citizens here today, and a couple of honored guests and current and former elected officials. I saw, although I can't find him now, Former Mayor Vandergriff, there he is back there. Former Mayor Vandergriff is here with us. And then our County Councilwoman for this zone, Deb Denny's, is here, and she has a presentation for us. I believe one of her staff is here with her as well. Please.
Good evening. So good to see you all yesterday for the memorial program. New Smyrna did a great job, and thank you, Mayor, Commission, and Manager. But you did a great job, and Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you, my husband, it's the first time he heard you speak publicly, and he was very impressed what that means, but so I didn't put you up against me, but he said, you know, that guy's really good. So take it.
I appreciate it.
It was a great ceremony. So just a little update. We're gonna give you a brief update on the beaches and some things that are currently going on. But one, thank Commissioner Sax. Was it last year we did cut the ribbon on Smyrna Dunes?
One year.
One year ago, the fishing pier. That beautiful three hundred foot fishing pier we have, we added down at Smyrna Dunes Park. We cut the ribbon, and when we were down there, we saw this bright yellow Canary building. I mean, it was just like stark building, and Jake and I were talking about it, and Commissioner Sax says, "Deb, wouldn't that be a great idea if we brought one of our local artists in and we painted some murals in there?" I think that's a really good idea. So we met with Jessica Winthrop, who is here with Mayor Coastal Services Director, and she contracted out with an artist. The panels are being installed as we speak to Smyrna Dunes with, she can go in a little bit more of that in a minute with some more information, so. Great collaboration, great, great idea, Commissioner Sax. I always enjoy working with my city commissioners to make it just a little bit better, because we've all got a little piece of a good idea, right? So. And Commissioner Colletti, thank you. Enjoyed working with you and meeting with you and with staff last week, and appreciate the kind words you said and our great working relationship that the county enjoys with the city of New Smyrna Beach, and we'll continue in that vein, which is why we're here. Next week, if you don't know, we will be experiencing next Sunday a Jeep Beach Flash Mob. Has nothing to do with the Jeep Beach Club that we all support, and they support our community. This is a standalone event, has nothing to do with our beloved Jeep Beach Club in Volusia County. So just be aware that's gonna happen on Sunday, and we're anticipating four hundred and fifty to six hundred Jeeps ascending in New Smyrna Beach, and I know we've been working with your city, right? So there's no gotchas here. We're all aware of it, and we'll be prepared to the best of our abilities. So we're going to assume they come in peace, and if not, we will enforce the peace for our beaches and protection of our citizens and our dunes. So before I turn it over to Jessica Winthrop here, who has some information, fascinating information on the numbers at our beach ramps, one thing that surprised me, I know and you know, we're the number one spot, we're the number one beach to come to countywide. Well, out of all of our beach ramps in Volusia County, the top five, four of them are New Smyrna Beach. We own the top four spots out of the top five in Volusia County. And if you talk to any of the folks that come here, it's because they can park on the beach, they can go get the best hamburger ever at Breakers, they can go down to Tony and Joe's, they can go to Chases on the beach, they can walk down Flagler Avenue and get ice cream. Can't quite get to Dairy Queen yet, Jason, but well.
I was wondering where you were going.
We'll work on it.
Keep walking long enough, they'll get there.
There you go. So it's what we have that brings them here and keeps them here, and another interesting thing about that, they love it here so much when they get here, they don't leave. We issued more tickets this weekend after eight o'clock for those that chose not to leave the beach when they were supposed to. So there's a lot of indicators and factors growing that we have not had to enforce to the degree that we are now. But that's because of our success. Everything you're doing, you're doing very well, and our day trippers enjoy it very much. And I understand that there's been some conversation about an agenda item we have coming up this next week on County Council with the Sixteenth Street Walkover. And be happy to talk about that more if you would like. It is an agenda item. You can check it on volusia.org and see all the alternatives there. And we take public input. So if you would like to show up at our County Council meeting and give public input, we welcome that too, and any of the citizens too. It's a public meeting. Please feel free to show up and give us your discussion. I will share this with you, and most of you remember this. My chair, Ed Kelly, when he was elected, his goal was to open up every drivable beach ramp in Volusia County. And the council accepted that and adopted that. The only one not opened countywide was Sixteenth Street, New Smyrna Beach. And remember, quite a bit of discussion, quite a few emails, quite a few meetings. So we have to do something about that dune, though. We have to restore that dune and some erosion issues down there. There's an issue other than just getting to the beach. We've got true erosion issues. So what council agreed to do was hit the pause button and not put in the drivable ramp, which we were estimating at that time in the budget, five to seven hundred million, and for the record, this is all budgeted. This is all planned for, and it comes from the beach fees. There's no general fund dollars in this. So as we expand our capacity and access to the beach, it's all funded. So the compromise that we made was, we're not going to put in a drivable ramp there. We'll put over an ADA accessible walkover over the dune. Well, that alone increased the cost at the very beginning before we even got to the parking spots of about a hundred and fifty thousand, because you've got the switchbacks. And this is not just a regular dune walkover. This is ADA compliant. So we listened, we've adjusted, and it's gonna come back for council, and I think there's three options. What council does with it, I don't know. I'm one of seven, and I'm certainly not going to discuss my opinion here before I get to my official council meeting and hear what my colleagues say in the direction of staff and where the majority wants to go, because that's what will happen. But I would just say for the record, remember the historical perspective, because the last thing we, New Smyrna Beach, wants to happen is to say we can't get there, we're not gonna get there. And I have some council members say, well, okay, if we don't have agreement, we're putting in the drivable ramp. There's three options being shown to council, but the fourth is unstated. So I'm just asking you to file that away as we go through this process and make your comments known to council. We definitely appreciate that. And Commissioner Sax, look forward to meeting you down there when we get done with this mural at Smyrna Dunes Park and to see the great artwork showing our environmental features. So if it's okay, I'd like to introduce very briefly Jessica Winthrop, our Coastal Division's Director, who's got all the detail. Jessica.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Jessica Winthrop. I am the Coastal Director for Volusia County, and I wanted to give you a couple of updates. I know we have a couple of new faces in here this year, so you may not be familiar with what we do to prepare for our beach season. Before every beach season starts, we have a coordination meeting at the NSB PD headquarters where we sit down with the New Smyrna Beach Police Department, the Florida Department of Transportation, the New Smyrna Beach City Manager, the Volusia County Traffic Engineer, the Southeast Volusia Area Advertising Authority, Volusia County Beach Safety, and in past years, we've also had some elected officials, both from the county and from the city present. I'm also there along with my staff, as well as our toll operating company, which is called Faneal. And then we go over some things, you know, best practices, how can we best keep the traffic in New Smyrna moving quickly and efficiently and get folks on the beach as fast as we can so that they can start having some fun in the sun. So what we do every year is we initiate a timing modification on Route forty-four that favors eastbound traffic in the morning to get everybody through there and get them past mission and all that, and then favors the westbound traffic on the afternoon to try to get them back home, back to ninety-five, back to Deland or wherever they're coming. We also have an agreement with New Smyrna. They place a couple of the variable message signs along forty-four, and Beach Safety also places some variable message signs along the North Causeway to help promote off-beach parking and the new Crawford Passholder Only Ramp. We initiate dual lane entry onto the beach of Flagler Avenue and Third Avenue. What that means is that starting at eight AM, as long as the beach is open and it's not closed for high tide, both the entrance and the exit lane on Flagler and Third are both entrance lanes. So you've got two lanes running at once onto the beach, trying to help alleviate with that backup. Just some background information. We had people lined up at Flagler Avenue waiting to go on the beach on Sunday and Monday this weekend as early as six forty-five. Our folks told them, go get some coffee, go get some breakfast, come back in like an hour, and we'll be happy to let you on the beach. We also created pop-up annual pass sales. You may have noticed at Third, Twenty-seventh, Flagler, and Beachway, there's a little four-by-four pop-up tent. What that does is it allows those folks who may need to renew their beach pass or purchase a new beach pass to get out from the toll booth, get them on the sand, where they can have a little bit of a more quality customer service experience. They may have questions, they may not know, they have to pull their registration out, they don't know where the registration is. It allows them to get a full service experience while everybody else who has their annual pass can just whip on down and not have to wait for them. It's really helped out, I think, significantly with our backup issues. We also went to a renewable pass a couple of years ago so that we don't have to remove the old pass by scraping. You probably remember that. Everybody's cursed it in line. The scraping of the old pass, while they, you know, Windex your windshield and then put a new pass on there, we've gotten rid of the scraping. We try not to Windex. We've got much better passes that are lasting about three years these days. We also, I have to applaud New Smyrna. I go to New Smyrna. This is my local beach. We initiated the Crawford Passholder Only Express Ramp, which allows current annual passholders, as well as all handicap individuals and disabled veterans license plates to get on at Crawford without having to wait for any annual pass sales, any daily pass sales. So it literally is scan and go. If there's a line at Beachway, hit Crawford, you'll get on. If there's a line at Flagler, hit Crawford, you'll get on. New Smyrna has taken this and blown it out of the water. On Monday, you had almost five hundred people go through Crawford Ramp. That's huge. Your locals have figured it out. I know a bunch of the surfers on the North End, they've all got it, trust me. There's a comparable site called El Portal in the Daytona Beach shores. They had seventy on Monday? So it's not doing hot up there. It was trying to be a diversion for Dunlauton. But New Smyrna, I gotta applaud you. Thank you for using it, because I love it personally, and I wanna keep it. And you're helping with the data and justifying it. We also have staffed up considerably at our ramps. All of our toll attendants are walking around in your OSHA yellow, they look almost like the minions in the cartoon, just running around, moving around, and they're in that yellow color. This year, we are starting an initiative where we are contracting with the Animal Control Department of the County to have a dedicated animal control officer within Smyrna Dunes Park, which is a big deal, because a lot of folks don't know when their dogs are overheated. Sometimes you have a rambunctious dog, and there may be, you know, one dog in heat, another dog that's a male, and they've figured it out, and they don't know each other. So it's good to have somebody in the park who can handle those issues, and they'll also help enforce those laws with regards to scat removal and then keeping your dogs on the leash. They will be there every holiday weekend, and we have some scattered weekends throughout the summer. So tell your neighbors, tell your friends, if you go to the park, you have to abide by the rules. So let's talk trash real quick. Trash is a big deal. I've got some stats. They're fresh in. I do not have my recyclable numbers yet, because they haven't issued them, but I do have my regular blue can trash numbers. In New Smyrna Beach, over Saturday, Sunday, and Monday of this past weekend, you had nine point one tons of trash. The North End, north of the peninsula, had twenty-seven point two one tons for a total of thirty-six point three two tons of trash generated over a three-day period. Just for some perspective, July fourth and fifth of last year, which is, we always call July fifth our major party cleanup day because of all the illegal things that happen on the beach. July fourth and fifth last year, we had twenty-seven point eight eight tons. So we beat it by almost, by about nine and a half tons. Three days versus two, but still, the trash was intense. But New Smyrna, you guys got it under ten. That's a good job. Pack it in, pack it out. So I just wanna run through a couple of numbers. On Friday, New Smyrna and New Smyrna only, you had one thousand four hundred and sixty-six beach entries. That's vehicle going through the ramp, getting on sand. Three hundred and five additional from Smyrna Dunes Park for a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one entries. That's Friday. Friday was our slow day. We sold a hundred and fifteen passes that day. Annual passes for the beach. On Saturday, you had three thousand twenty-six beach entries. You had five hundred and eight entries at Smyrna Dunes Park. You had a total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-four beach entries. On Saturday alone, not including Smyrna Dunes Park, we sold two hundred and forty-five annual passes. That's a lot. You know how long it takes to get your annual pass. Think about two hundred and forty-five people doing it. Here's the crazy part. So Saturday wasn't our biggest day, but on Saturday, we opened up at eight AM. We shut down all ramps, Beachway through Twenty-seventh, for capacity at ten fifty-four. Within three hours, we filled the beach to capacity. Capacity is just under, just about twenty-two hundred vehicles on the sand. We opened New Smyrna Beach up about one o'clock and then closed at about one fifty for high tide. You had a midday high tide all weekend too, which was a major impact. So once we closed for capacity, it was very hard for us to open back up in time for high tide. Beachway, as you probably know, has a big turnover mid-morning from the surfers doing their morning session, going home to do business. So we did start doing pre-sales. What does a pre-sale mean? That means if you are sitting at the Flagler Ramp after seven thirty, we will start selling you a daily pass or pre-scanning you so that once eight o'clock comes, we open the gates, and those who have already been processed can just roll through. So it pays to come to the beach early, because you're guaranteed a spot. If you try to get on the beach after eleven, you're not, you may not make it. So on Sunday, we sold a total of one hundred and eighty-eight passes. You had two thousand eight hundred and forty-three beach entries, four hundred and eighty-three park entries. So you processed a total of three thousand three hundred and twenty-six total entries between Smyrna Dunes and the beach. We had our most efficient hour that day. At nine AM on Sunday morning, we processed one thousand and twenty-two vehicles in one hour at our five ramps. So over a thousand vehicles in one hour hit the beach at five ramps. So all the gates were open at eight. Twenty-seventh, Third, and Flagler shut down for capacity at ten thirty, which was followed very shortly by Crawford and Beachway at eleven o'clock in the morning. Beachway opened back up at about noon, but then had to close again at about three o'clock for tide. Crawford, Flagler, Third, and Twenty-seventh did not reopen due to capacity, and then it switched over to high tide. So people, basically what that story tells me is people came, and they came for the day. They were hanging out. This wasn't a two-hour surf session. This was, we're coming, we're setting up our tents, we're grilling out. You probably saw a lot of this if you were on the beach this weekend. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them if I can. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Deb and Jessica. Thanks for being here and providing that great insight, and Deb, for your continued leadership at the council and all you do for New Smyrna Beach and being involved, you know, showing up at things like the event yesterday. It's really. I tried to talk her, I was trying to hand her my speech right before the event started, I was gonna let her, let her take it over, but she would, she wouldn't do that. So next, next year, we'll get you up there. Excellent. Next item up, Item B. It's a presentation by Carr, Riggs and Ingram, our independent audit firm, which will outline the audit report for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018. And the commission, I believe we all had a chance to meet individually with no staff present with the auditors, is that a correct statement?
That is a correct statement.
And ask any, any question we, we wanted, as pointed as, as needed. And now we have a chance to hear the presentation all together and ask any questions we have here as well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Yvonne Claymore and I'm an audit partner with Carr, Riggs and Ingram. I'm the partner in charge of the audit engagement, this is for the fiscal year September 30, 2018. You get an audit because it's required by Florida statutes, but you present that great big book called a Comprehensive Annual Financial Reporter, or CAFER, because you participate in a program with the Government Finance Officers Association, receive a certificate of excellence in financial reporting if it meets certain criteria, gets reviewed by the peers, you submit your, your CAFER, it goes, it gets shipped off to somebody that goes through a very long, lengthy checklist and says that you've met all the requirements to say that this is a document that provides your users of the financial statements with transparent and comprehensive information. You've received that reward, award every year since 1979 and received it again in 2017 and there's a copy of it in your CAFER. The auditor's report, the main audit report, which is on the financial statements themselves, is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of audit assurance you can receive. It says that your financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It included a paragraph, because this year you had a federal single audit under what's now called the Uniform Guidance. Those are the rules for which we have to provide for the audit of the grant programs. It's called a single audit because they want, it's done in conjunction with your financial statement audit in a single audit. You're required to get one of those anytime you spend more than $750,000 in grant expenditures, federal grant expenditures. There's a matter of emphasis, this year the city implemented a new accounting standard related to the other post-employment benefit liability, also referred to as the OPEB liability. There's details in the financial statements that talks about the impact of that new accounting rule. The internal control over financial reporting. There were no instances of non-compliance with laws, regulations, contracts or grants. And that means that when we're in here doing our audit of your financial statements, we also look at key compliance requirements that are in Florida statutes or other contracts that may say you have to do certain reporting requirements. You know, you have, if you have debt, you have to submit your financial report to Emma, which is that online reporting for financial transparency. If, you know, there's other state statutes that we go and we test limited amounts of those state statutes compliance, we didn't note any instances of non-compliance. This year, we included a finding related to the year-end closing entries. Again, as the financial statement information, the financial transactions are processed during the year. For the most part, they're running through different, what we call modules, part of your general ledger, the receivables and the payables and they're processed. And the system kind of works itself, it's virtually automated. At the end of the year, there's a great deal of what's called journal entries and those are those manual adjustments, somebody has to actually, you know, write out the journal entry or at least enter it and say, "This is what I want this journal entry to be." And it's kind of a manual entry into your general ledger system. Because it's manual and, you know, it has human intervention, it's obviously the most risky part. So we always look at your journal entry and in particular, we look at year-end closing entries. It's things like making sure at the end of the year that your capital asset detail matches what was in the, the general ledger in terms of capital outlay expenditures, it's those kind of entries to make everything line up. There were some issues getting those done this year. There was also a non-routine entry related to the refunding debt transaction that took place in May of 2018. Part of it was recorded, part of it wasn't. When the rest of it got recorded, it changed the accounting landscape from an audit standpoint. Internal controls over compliance and major programs. Again, because you're getting a single audit this year, we not only look at your internal control over financial reporting, we look over your internal controls over how you handle your compliance with your grants. And it's strictly looking at internal control over compliance and on compliance itself. With compliance, there's, it's black and white, there's, compliance isn't material. It's, it can be inconsequential, but for the most part, if you're in compliance, you're either in compliance or you're not. Controls, you can have a system where you don't have good controls but still be in compliance. We used to call that compliance by luck, but that usually is because, you know, the controls are there, they're just maybe not documented. And then in the audit world, if it's not documented, we can't audit it because we have to have something because we're auditors and that's how we work. You had one major program this year that was related to the FEMA grant. I mentioned to each of you when we met that, you have $2.5 million in FEMA expenditures reported on your schedule of expenditures this year. A portion of that, a large portion of that, was actually related to expenditures that actually happened in 2017. But because of the way the rules work under Uniform Guidance, you didn't get to pick those expenditures up until this year. That was about $1.455 million. So almost, a little more than half of what's in there is actually related to Hurricane Matthew and that all happened in 2017. And the remaining million dollars, thus, thereabouts, is related to a little bit of carryover of Matthew and, and for Irma. With regards to the reporting there on the FEMA, there is a finding related to the quarterly reporting over the awarding agency. Again, there was a new system that's never been used for any other hurricane event and it was introduced with Hurricane Matthew. And you started using that system in January of 2018. There's quarterly reporting to make things, you know, because it's, make things interesting. Irma and Matthew have different reporting deadlines even though you're reporting in the same system. So it makes it lovely for your team to try to figure out how to get it on time, but all three of the quarters didn't meet the deadline, it's using the system, it's really just getting it ramped up. What does that mean to you? All of your expenditures had already been reported, so they went in in that first quarterly report. So the fact that the second and third quarters didn't get filed timely doesn't mean anything other than they just weren't processing the closeout for those projects. Because all of those projects right now for Hurricane Matthew are waiting to be closed out, which means that they're going through them now and saying, "Of this money that you expended, we're gonna allow you this, we're gonna disallow that." And then there's kind of like a back and forth and then there's a true-up. And you either cut them a check or they cut you a check. So you're in that phase. So it just holds up that process a little bit, but your staff is on that now and getting that fixed. Related to the preparation, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, in order for us to identify what's a major program and get the audit done, we have to have an accurate schedule. There were some issues getting the schedule prepared this year and so there's a finding related to that. Chapter 10550, Rules of the Florida Auditor General. That's basically anything else that doesn't fall under financial reporting rules or, or single audit rules. The Auditor General kind of captures it in their letter. Last year, you had two comments related to the rental income from an airport lease and a golf course exception reports. Both of those comments have been resolved in the current year. There's one current year comment that should say 201804, my apologies. On budgetary compliance, again, that transaction that we were talking about, where only part of the refunding transaction got recorded when the other half got recorded. The fund that it was recorded in was no longer in compliance with the budgeted appropriations, which is a Florida statute compliance issue. Again, and it was after the period of time where you could have done a budget amendment. So that one journal entry that didn't get recorded correctly resulted in a compliance issue. Compliance with the investment policies, it's a standalone report. We're required to do specific procedures around whether or not you're in compliance with your investment policies and there were no instances of non-compliance noted. So a couple of highlights, again, we talked about the implementation of the OPEB liability standard. Again, changed the way the calculation was, the liability was calculated and had new disclosures. Restated the liability from one point, as of 9:30, 2017, from 1.4 million to $3 million. And again, it's as a result of two things. A change in the discount rate, the discount rate used in the prior year was 4%. Under the new rules, it was 3.35%. And then the use of the entry age actuarial cost method versus the projected unit cost method resulted in that increase. The minimum fund balance policy, this is a little bit of a change. We recalculated it after I met with every, you guys on Thursday. Your actual minimum per year policy is only 6.3 versus the 6.8, which I told you on Thursday. So you were actually closer, you were at 23% versus the 25% is your target. So you're a lot closer to your target. And again, the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend a minimum of two months or basically 17%, which at 4.1 million is their minimum requirement, or their minimum recommendation and you're at 5.8. So you've exceeded the GFOA recommendation and you're just shy of your target from your policy. And it's an increase from about $387,000 from the prior year. And again, you still have those hurricane-related expenditures pending filing and closeout and we're hoping those will result in checks to the city. The CRAs, you still have that little bit of money hanging out there on the 1985 CRA. The funds are already allocated, you have about $28,000 that needs to be spent out. The 2015 CRA has about $155,000 carrying over from fiscal year 2017 to use to fund projects on US1 and the historic West Side community. The golf course, you had a total revenue of $1.1 million, which is about the same as fiscal year 2017, which we were kind of hoping to see an increase in there. But again, remember 2016, you were closed for part of the year for renovations and so we were kind of waiting to see where 2018 fell. Again, because you had a transfer in from the general fund to support the operations of the golf course, the fund deficit was improved by about 11%. The sanitation fund experienced a 14% growth in revenues due to expanding your customer base. Remember, there's people we talked about that come to New Smyrna Beach and then they stay. You actually have some residents moving in, you had a lot of, you had some residential and commercial growth and then you had a new rate structure effective in 2017 that resulted in the growth there. And then the marina generated about $74,000 in cash from operations and they were able to reimburse the general fund for about $31,000 for renovations that had been made in the prior year that the general fund funded. Unspent debt proceeds, you have about $3.4 million sitting out in unspent debt proceeds, $2.3 million from the borrowing for the Live Oak Cultural Center and the City Hall Annex Facility. Again, that money was just borrowed in May of 2018, so it was relatively new and it's still being spent down. The $1.15 million from the general obligation bonds from 2005 was a result from a construction of sidewalks, it's kind of an ongoing project and there's some sidewalk projects still being funded there. Pension fund, citywide, the pension liability decreased by about $728,000 primarily due to investment performance. Again, that investment performance is, you can't do anything to control it, so you're kind of at the mercy of what happens during the year. Your deferred inflows also decreased by about $180,000 related to actual experience, unexpected experience and investment earnings. And then your deferred inflows stayed about the same. So we always want to talk about some, you know, several years ago, you guys asked about what difference does 1% make? You might remember, for those of you that are on the council, a few years ago, the FRS had a big debate about whether or not they were using the correct discount rate and there were a body of, of the citizenry that was saying the discount rate you're using is too high, you need to be, take it down a little bit. So what does that mean if you were to take that discount rate down 1%? Well, for the FRS, it would go from a $1.2 million liability up to a $2.1 million if they decrease their discount rate. For your police pension fund, you would move from $4.2 million to $6.8 million. And for the firefighters' pension, it would move from $4.1 million to $7.2. So again, that's all tied to investment performance, so it's really important for these pension funds. We're watching that investment performance and making sure that they're hitting the targets and that you're doing a good job making sure you understand how that equates to a discount rate so that you're getting a liability that's as accurate as possible. For the plan, next position on the police pension plan, you're at 80.7% as of 9:30, 18 is a percent of total pension liability and that's how much you have in assets versus the total pension liability. For the firefighters' pension fund, you're sitting at 84.9. There's no science to it, there's no rule that says where you have to be, that has to be a tolerance level for this commission. So for the grant activity, the FEMA, again, Hurricane Matthew, and I think I have these mixed up, is Hurricane Matthew was 1.6 and Hurricane Irma was 915,000. Again, both projects are working through the system. You had other grants related to the Department of Transportation for airport projects of about $419,000 and then you had some CDBG projects for about $155,000. The grants, state grant money this year did not reach $750,000, so you weren't required to have a Florida single audit. And with that, I will entertain questions.
Okay. Thank you. Before opening up for commission questions, just wanted to clarify two things. First, for you, Ms. Clayburn, so, just so everyone's clear, because we, you know, audit speak can be confusing sometimes to people that haven't sat through a million of them and even to people that have. No evidence, there, there are findings, which we'll talk about in a minute, but no evidence, any indications of fraud, misuse of funds, missing funds, nothing like that.
No, what we found was accounting errors.
Correct. Okay. And so my, my one comment on that, and then again, then I'll open up to the commission, then I'll have some other comments. But my one comment on that is, remembering also, we have John, is brand new, he came in during this audit, so literally no transactions happened under his watch. We do have room for improvement to fix these findings. And I want to make this very clear that I expect them to be cleaned up under your leadership. I've never seen an audit, I don't recall, maybe I have, that had no findings, but having the same type of findings and some of these findings particularly are a bit concerning, but I know that we can fix it. So I'll pause there, other commission comments or questions?
Could you have one question that I would like you to go over again with me concerning the golf course?
Yes.
It's my understanding there was a large amount of debt assumed or a large expense a couple of years ago.
Talking to the mic so they can hear you.
My mic wandered away, from Mike. And we've been carrying that for a number of years, I think.
Correct.
And that is because that's in a special fund. And based on our discussions, you kind of recommended that that should be operating more out of the general fund because it would present a truer picture of what our debt really is.
Correct. The loan transaction was what I like to call BY, before Yvonne. It was long before I arrived on scene as your auditor. It was about $777,000, it's still sitting out there to be repaid by the golf course to the general fund at the time they turn a profit and can refund it. But in the five years that I've been with you, I've not seen the golf course turn a profit where they've been able to, to provide not only repayment, but the general fund continues to fund the golf course and, and prop them up, so to speak, for whatever reason, whether it was getting the greens redone or for operations. So what we had recommended is, there's very limited circumstances where you're required to call a fund, an enterprise fund, which is what the golf course is. And the purpose of an enterprise fund is, is you're gonna charge fees at a structure such that it will pay for itself. So say, like your airport, you're collecting rents from the, well, not the airport, the marina. You're collecting fees from the users of the marina and it's supporting the operations of the marina. That's an enterprise fund and the idea is that it's going to self-support. The golf course is not self-supporting, doesn't seem to be self-supporting, the $777,000 is just looming out there. So what we had recommended is that it operate as a, basically a sub-fund of the general fund and then for financial reporting, it really is just part of the general fund because it's really operating more like a department of, or an operation of parks and recreation than it is a standalone fund.
Okay. And it would, I, I understand that that's the debt, no matter which column you put it in, so it doesn't change that. But it kind of gives a truer picture of what the general fund debt really is. Now, I've been trying my best to pay that off by going to the golf course as much as possible, but I don't seem to be making a dent in it.
I'm sure it's appreciated.
But it's appreciated by me. I would like to see that change made because it's realistic, golf courses are not the moneymakers they were decades. Golf courses are not the moneymakers they were decades ago. And it's a service, it's more of a service than self-supporting.
Right, I agree, and that's, and that's kind of our experience with other cities that have golf courses. You know, we, I don't think I've seen one in recent years that's been making money. Some are close to break even, but they're not making any money. And it's just the nature of them, so you make, you make a choice, you know, as part of our service to our citizens, do we want to have a municipal course that's available to all of our citizens or do we not? And if, if it's not self-supporting, you're not losing that transparency because, you know, what we're recommending is a sub-fund of the general fund. So you'll still be able to see the golf course and its operations and analyze it and, and try to help it achieve efficiencies. But it just takes it from a financial reporting standpoint and makes that really ugly picture. It just kind of absorbs it back into what it really is doing and it's really just operating, you know, the general fund really is supporting it.
Yeah, to my commission members, I would like to see that change in accounting practices made. We have any number of things that we don't make money on and we're not really here for that purpose. We're here to provide that, that out, that way for people to go, like a part.
I don't golf, but I, I will frequent the restaurant because I did enjoy that.
I have heard good things. Any other questions for the auditors? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Truly, I think this year they went probably a bit. A bit above and beyond in, in the transition of the finance team, so we really do appreciate it and thank you. Before we, before we leave that on completely, John, just a couple other thoughts I had as she went through that. The, there was some notes about the, the different fund balances and the reserves and whether or not we met those or not. And I know we, we have an item on that in the consent agenda and you and I have talked about it. But I think moving forward, that we should highlight anytime we're below some minimum threshold and as we do budget transfers that come before routinely, just highlighting where, any funds that are impacted, where they're at as a percent of the, the, the minimum balance, just so there's full transparency. And it can never be said that we didn't know we were below a threshold, just keeping that always in front of the commission, I think would be, would be a good, a good move. And that was it. All right, next item up is public participation. Before we do that, I want to acknowledge Ant Farm Medias here with us tonight. One of the last, I think the last meeting, if all goes well, the last meetings. They've slowly worked themselves out of a job, helped to train the, the team that will be taking over and they've done a fantastic job. We've received rave reviews from the community, so really do appreciate it, went above and beyond in, in a couple of ways. So thank you very much, the Anthony and Anthony team, we have an Anthony here and an Anthony out there, so thank you all. We'll miss you, it's been fun getting to know you. You'll miss Yellidog Eats every, every commission meeting as well. All right, well that will open it up for public participation. Three-minute time limit will be imposed, this is your opportunity to address the commission on any topic desired, including those items on the consent agenda, administrative items, new business, ordinances on first readings and boards and commissions. So to be clear, items, second readings and public hearings, you'll have a chance to address those items specifically as they come forward. And remember that we moved item nine A to item eight C, so. Yes, ma'am?
I am here for public participation.
All right.
My name is Sally Gillespie, I live at 610 North Peninsula and I am representing the New Smyrna Beach Residents Coalition tonight. And we have a request of the commission related to the comprehensive plan review. We're very impressed with the work product that staff has been doing. Our one, well, one of our two regrets is that there has not been much public outreach for participation beyond those specific bodies, boards if you will, that are involved in that particular element in the comprehensive plan. So we would very much like to have some type of amendment to these procedures so that we can more closely involve the community. As an example, the executive committee of the coalition has prepared some suggestions, if you will, for ordinance 2419, which is coming before you tonight. The rewrite on that economic element has been terrific. But we're painting a picture for the future here in this comprehensive plan review and we would like very much to be a little more futuristic in how we approach economic development. And so these are some ideas that have risen from the coalition for your consideration to be added to this ordinance before second reading. The other item that concerns us is a disconnect in some areas between LDRs, codes, maps and the language of the comp plan. I know for sure there's one because it involves my own property. And from what we are doing as a coalition, we suspect there are others. We ask you to hire a professional to assist our staff. They are stretched and overworked and please consider bringing in a professional to give them some assistance so that we can accomplish these two goals. Thank you for considering this, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close public participation and move on to the consent agenda. Beginning with Vice Mayor, wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Would you not?
Commissioner McGurk?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Sacks?
I have your face.
No? Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
All right. What's your pleasure?
I'm getting there. I'm cutting my list down.
Okay.
I would have to say G, I, G and I.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I amend my?
Sure. Just this one time?
Pull M.
Pull M. All right. And I am going to pull, just for a really, really quick discussion, K and L. So to have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, H, J, N. Did I get them all? N. M was pulled by Commissioner Sacks.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, Commissioner Colode, you're up with item G first.
Okay, I just, I understand that this agreement does not really have a termination date. And I know we're looking, when we get into our budget, about the transport services and the fire department personnel. And how will this affect that is my question? Will it hamstring us in any way, shape or form if we decide to expand our services? To anyone?
While he's coming.
I knew there was somebody.
While he's coming up, Carrie, I don't, can you be looking if you don't know off the top of your head? It doesn't have a termination date, but does it, we have some termination clause, we can exit on 60-day notice or something?
Yeah, we have to give them notice and then you have to sit out for two years if you.
Right, that's what I remember, yeah. So we can get out of it, but.
We, we can opt out at your choosing, we do have to give them 60 days just so they can assemble whatever kind of remediation they need.
And then stay out for two years.
And then, then we're out for two years at their, at their leisure.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. So your, your question for the chief was?
That was answered, thank you.
Oh, okay.
That was my concern.
Anybody else on here?
Any other questions on item G?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
No.
Commissioner Colode?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Commissioner Colode is still up with item I.
It appears we're going to be spending $6,000 to develop this course. I'm really not in favor of that. Have we tracked any of the use of the other course that was put in? And do we find that to be overloaded? And I understand the diversity of having different courses, although both of these appear to be in the same type of physical environment.
The course is not overloaded, it is well-used. I don't think anyone was able to be here from the Disc Golf Association, but it is well-used, it's a popular sport. It's gaining popularity, they like different locations to go to. It's a partnership, you know, with the 6,000 is basically the materials. The, the baskets, the wood timbers to do the parking, you know, different things, they do all the labor. So it's mainly the materials to run it.
Thank you.
Well, I, so what I like about this is, it's a, you know, form of a triple P. We're putting in 6K of hard costs, they're putting in upwards, I think on the last one it was 25,000 or more of soft costs, the labor cost. There's zero, zero maintenance cost, it, it's maintained just by the natural foot traffic. I can tell you, I play that course on a pretty routine basis, the one that we did at Holland Park. And you can tell it gets used because the undergrowth is not regrowing, it's trampling down. You can tell, you can tell where people throw their frisbees off into certain spots because there's a beaten path over there, which we know how Florida undergrowth grows. So I, I think it's a pretty decent investment for what we get out of the six grand, but.
Okay, well, I find our investment is providing the land.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion or do you have a motion on this item?
Can you make a brief discussion on this item and then a motion? I see it as an asset, it's a growing sport, it's a minimal outlay compared to the effort that they're putting into it. And I understand now that our mayor is playing it, maybe he'll teach me how to play because I was an avid frisbee player at the time. But my biggest concern is we're losing basketball courts around the city. I do appreciate the fact that pickleball play is tremendous and the courts are getting used widely. But I was over at the library, at the gymnasium complex by Live Oak and I noticed that there's one little backboard and net sitting there and it is practically, you could only shoot a game of horse. There's, there's no real play, so.
I, I hear you, I think for this item, well, let's move this item forward if you want to bring that up. And the mayor and Commissioner Burrows are happy to do so.
I'll do that. So I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
To support that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item I, City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colode?
No.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, I pulled items K and L briefly on items, item K, which is a new investment policy. John and I spoke briefly, as did with the city manager, just before the meeting, have I had a ton of time to discuss it. But I'd like the commission just to consider one slight change to the language. I think John has a draft of he can, he can share, which is that we add some representative that is either a member of or appointed by this board to the investment committee. And it's not like our other advisory committees, it would be the finance director, the city manager and then one other appointee. And the main reason there is, in extreme market conditions, you don't want that buck stopping entirely with staff. You don't want fingers being able to be pointed. I, I think that there should be a shared responsibility, I think we should have a presence in that, in that decision process. For, for many reasons, it's how I typically see it in an investment committee situation. So I think it's just for the, for the better of, of everyone. I think John agreed and has some amended language that he could, he could make to that particular section. I don't remember what section it is, but any, any concerns with making that, that change? And we can figure out who that is.
Say that again, you want someone from the, an elected up there?
I, I think, and, and John can speak to his previous experience, I think in his old city, it was one of the commission, was a part of the investment committee. We could also do it, someone that we appoint, I think the background is, is important. I think it needs to be someone with, you know, some kind of a background that could add some value to that. But yeah, that, that's basically what I'm saying, is someone besides just a team of, of staff members. We're talking investments of multi-multi-million dollars that have, you know, serious ramifications to it, so.
Okay, so we, I wouldn't necessarily agree with appoint, I, I appoint an elected. I think you make a good point of appointing someone who the city commission can appoint with a proper background. But, and I think the background point you make is really important.
Yeah.
The second thing is, what kind, it may be difficult to find somebody, what are the potential liabilities of this or exposure from this person who we would appoint to this board? Is there a potential problem there, do we need to provide some kind of insurance for that person?
No.
Not that I know of, but I've heard a job.
I mean, there's, there's folks serving on investment committees and nonprofits all across this county right now. So it's, we'd, we'd fall under all those same things. There's probably, I don't remember them off the top of my head, but there's provisions to protect for that. It's similar to a Good Samaritan clause and, and that you take no personal liability for that.
Are we confident we can find someone who wants to serve on that?
I, I think so, yeah.
All right.
Somebody from the, maybe an appointee from the Economic Development Advisory, maybe it's a member of the chamber. I mean, I think we could, we have a lot of retired executives with, with a, with a good background in that space, so. John, do you have anything to add or any comments or thoughts?
The only comment I would make, Mayor, is if it's going to be a member of the commission, then that one sentence would state that the committee would be made up of the finance director, the city manager and a member of the city commission. If it's going to be a, a member of the, the community, then I would need to change the one word that the committee would be made up of, the city manager, the finance director or a member of the community as appointed by the city commission. So I would just need to know the direction so that I can make that one sentence reworded a little bit.
Would it be or and?
I could do, I could do it that way as well.
I mean, I think a three, three-person committee would be better than a two-person committee.
It would be a minimum of the city manager, myself and one other person.
So it would be an.
I could very well reword it to be a member of the city commission or a member of the community as appointed by the city commission.
Mayor, I would even go further, member of the commission and a committee member. Like I said, I think it'd be good to have that transparency there.
I'm okay with that. I mean, in my experience, investment committees are one of the most important things you have. Again, because all is great when the market's going up, but the minute it turns down, everybody starts saying, well, why were we in that? And I've also talked to John about our investment philosophy and it's practically, practically as conservative as you can get. So I mean, we're, we're going to be fine, but it's just a, a layer of protection for all involved, that there's no even semblances of, of impropriety and we all feel very comfortable with what's going on. I just don't want that burden resting on anyone's shoulders, so.
Well, I'd like the recommend, recommendation to add a commission member and I would also accept the fourth person. I know we sit on the fire and police pension boards, so we have, we have a good idea as to which direction they're going and presentations are always good, so. I would recommend adding two more.
And this isn't really a heavy lift, I mean, this is, we're not, we're not day trading in this. I mean, this is a, you know, quarterly type, maybe, you know, update type deal. It's, it's really just that observation responsibility, so.
You know, there's only one of us that doesn't sit on either the fire or police pension board. That's a good candidate for this board we're talking about.
Yes, it is.
Coincidentally, he seems to be.
Can we exempt the mayor? I got speeches and stuff. You don't sit on the police and fire, do you?
Sure, I'm on the fire.
You're on the fire?
We got two fire days.
Two on fire and two on police?
Yes.
Good idea, Mayor.
Yes, great idea.
Happy to serve. All right, do you have a motion on that? I think where it landed, I heard a lot of consensus around two, I like the idea, actually, that.
Mike, you make the motion?
I didn't, but I will. Yes, I make the motion, that it be. I didn't, but I will. Yes, I make the motion. That it be approved with the changes recommended.
Citizen and commission member.
Citizen and commission member.
Okay.
And the citizen will be recommended by who? That's not in it. It's just a commission.
By the commission. Appointed by the commission, yeah.
Second.
All right, City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Although that took a turn for me there at the end. All right, item L, I only wanted to point out, I think this is a great thing to add. I guess my question for the commission is, I'm suspecting, although I didn't read all of their governing documents, that we have the same type situation could occur on many of our other advisory boards. So do we want to have staff work to make this same change in other advisory boards? Although most of them, we don't have, everything's not coterminous. It's usually very diverse terms. So it's not quite as big of a deal as this one. But do we want to add the same language to other advisory boards?
I don't think so because we can always change, we have the ability to add another term even though our policy is to cap after two terms. So we have that flexibility already.
Well, this is just saying if, if their end date is June 22 of 2018, some random end date, and we happen to not meet then, or we meet but we don't make a decision like we did last time, all of a sudden now this board is, technically, we right now at this moment in time do not have a CDBG advisory board, which may put us in conflict with some other ordinance that we really dug deep enough.
I understand, Mayor. I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm just saying, I think all our boards should run until replaced, even if that's a, an implied extension of their term. Any concerns with having staff do that, do that change? All right. So that really doesn't impact item L. We made no changes to that. So I'd ask for a motion to approve item L and then Carrie, you have your direction.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Second for discussion. My only concern is that it not get lost somewhere in the process. If whoever's in charge of a particular, particular board just forgets to submit for reappointments or people expire, we lose track of that. You know, this could go on forever and we go, oh, we haven't appointed anybody in years.
So that leads me to a whole other discussion, which I had earlier today with somebody in the city clerk's office. I think we're looking at some revised software that will help us to monitor things like attendances and terms and have tickler files that will present these automatically. So I think we've got some great progress we can make that will help mitigate that concern.
Thank you.
And solve some of the other issues we've had before. All right, I had a motion and a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Jake, item M.
Yes, item M. I don't object terribly, although I have some occasional concerns about beer gardens. But the bike and bar event has always been problematic for me. The biking is a conveyance and you can be ticketed and up to being jailed for riding your bicycle while drunk. And we've had encounters with the bikers who go from bar to bar. And so I, I have to oppose this beer, bike and bar event once again. So that's, I'll be free upon my feelings on that bike and bar thing.
Okay. Do you have a motion on item M?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If no other discussion?
So this is a bike, pedal bike? I assumed it was a motorcycle, so, okay. So this is the pedal bike one?
Bicycle, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Yep. Any other discussion? Not, City Clerk?
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right. I think that got us through the consent agenda. All right, item seven is the approval of a purchase at 572 Washington Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It's requested that consideration be given to the purchase of 572 Washington Street. This is a 9,430 square foot parcel. It's got 46 feet of frontage on Washington and it's 205 feet deep. The parcel is immediately adjacent to the east of the Alonzo Babe James Community Center at Washington Street, that part of the community center property. There are two appraisals that staff had done on the property. They're in the packet. The appraisal from Palmeroy came in at 95,000 and the appraisal from Hefington came in at 145,000. There was one, I noticed a small bit of confusion is that the one appraisal had it zoned differently than the other appraisal. But in any case, staff spoke to the owners and asked them if they would consider the lower of the two offers, which was 95,000. They reviewed the offer, came back, said, said they would accept, and the executed contract from the seller is attached. The staff approached the New Smyrna Beach Housing Authority to see if they'd be interested in placing affordable housing on the property if it were donated to the housing authority by the city. Housing Authority staff said they were very interested in continuing collaboration with the city. And there is a conceptual rendering in the packet for three two-story, two-bedroom homes. Yes, three two-story, two-bedroom homes and a one-car garage. That's completely conceptual. We don't know till going through site plan what's really available there. Housing Authority said that the, in any case, the housing could not be built until at least 2021 or '22 because of their current financial constraints. That would actually be a good time for the timeframe for the CRA as mentioned in the packet. So currently, the CRA Capital Improvement Plan budget has two line items for affordable housing and the purchase price and closing costs are available in the current CRA Capital Improvement Plan. So staff recommends that the city purchase 572 Washington Street with a caveat that it will be donated to the New Smyrna Beach Housing Authority for their construction of affordable housing on the site. Any questions?
Couple.
Sure.
Are they going to demolish the current structure?
Yes.
Could it be used during the period of time?
Donna Banks and I went through the structure with the, the two official, the building official and deputy building official, and all of us thought, no. The appraisal points out there's problems with headroom going up the steps. If you, if you're standing and looking on the east side down the line with your eye, things don't look very good there. So I wouldn't want to take a chance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I've seen the two appraisals. I think 95,000 for a piece of dirt is pretty expensive. That's pretty pricey. I see the appraisals. I don't have anything to argue about, but I just feel that 95,000 was pretty pricey. How, how we got to 145 with Hefington, which I know them, they're, I think highly of them.
Yes.
But I still have a tough time digesting $95,000 for a piece of dirt there.
I noticed that neither one use the same comps. Thought that was interesting.
Any other questions or comments for staff? So I had the, I had the same, same two as my colleagues. First thought was what to do with an interim and then, you know, I think the appraised value contemplates some continued, I mean, because, let's face it, if someone private bought that, you would continue to rent it out and have some kind of cash flow on it, which is contemplated in the appraisal. As evidenced by the comps that are used, they're not dirt, I don't believe, or I don't think all of them were at least. So I, but I think that is on the, that is on the high side, which explains why housing is so unaffordable in New Smyrna.
It will continue to be rental property.
Yeah.
And will be income-producing.
Yeah.
We're not going to be using, we're not using the structure. We're tearing that down. The housing authority's going to build something brand-new. So really what we're buying is the value of the dirt. That's what I mean.
I'm responding to the comment that the appraisal was up because it's income-producing.
Right. And when we're looking at the value of prime piece of property being developed that the city is looking at buying between, on the high side, without grant money in the 60s per acre. And then I'm looking at this location and we're at 95,000 and it's not even close to an acre. So I'm just, you know, it's, it's, I'm trying to reconcile this a little bit.
We can bring, yeah, come on up. We could, we could have the appraisals, appraisers come back to another meeting if you care to.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think what we really want to do is be able to control the property. We're about to put a splash pad in. Children are going to be there all the time. It's right by the Babe James. If we do not control that piece of property, it is zoned, mixed-use, so it could be anything. So I think controlling it because of the children is what we're looking at. And I know it's a lot of money, but if it's mixed-use, it could be a bar. It could be a lot of different things. You know what, you know what's in there, right? So.
Is, is...
Nightclub.
Is a bar an approved use of that site now?
A nightclub is.
As a special exception or as an approved use?
It's a mixed-use.
It's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use, okay.
So it's controlling the piece of property that's by the Babe James, by the splash park, by the playground for the future of the children.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we will have to pay for the demolition also, so that really adds to the cost of buying bare land. It's a pretty expensive proposition. As you have all heard, I'm all for expanding our affordable housing, so that really weighs in on it. And I would like to see us have a way, I realize where this funding's coming from, to expand the affordable housing elsewhere. Just my comments.
All right, any other comments or questions of staff? What I was just handed shows the permitted uses. I assume this applies to that site specifically, highlighted our billiard halls, nightclubs, and package stores. I don't know when the last one, one of those has been built in New Smyrna is, but...
Mayor, again, I want to point out, one of the, one of these appraisals says mixed-use. The other one said it's recreation, which makes no sense at all because recreation is Babe James.
Which one was the recreation? The 95 or the...
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me, Amy King, planning director. I just wanted to point out that there are certain rules and guidelines in order for any place to serve liquor. So it, even though it does say tavern as a permitted use, we do have rules for any place to serve liquor in particular. So even though that is, there is a caveat to a tavern, so to speak, or a nightclub, there are rules that do regulate alcohol consumption in New Smyrna Beach, in particular of liquor. So I just wanted to add that to the record. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I mean, this would be an improvement, but it's an improvement at a price, so. Well, it's the commission's pleasure. I have a motion on this item. There seems to be some angst. One, one option I would put on the table, I guess, is we, nothing's stopping us, I assume, from going back and negotiating with the owners and telling them we're maybe not quite there at 95K, but...
We can make a counter offer.
Seeing what kind of a counter offer might could get us there.
Maybe it's best to table it then. I believe if it dies for lack of a motion, that'll kick in a time of concern. If we want to look at it at a lower price. So I'll make a motion to table this for, how much time would you like?
We don't have to put a date certain on it, so we can just table it.
Make a motion to table it.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Is that for purposes of, is that direction to staff to, okay.
Negotiate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item 7B. We have two code enforcement lien amnesty requests. Remembering that the one for 801 Mary Avenue was pulled. We're going to take these one by one. The first one that I have listed is the 2301 Saxon Drive. So we'll start off with that one. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. At 2301 Saxon, we have a demolition lien and a nuisance abatement. The lien is at, currently, as we stand here right now, is at $12,578.94, which includes the interest, postage, and admin, and that's as of the end of April. The nuisance abatement is at $540.37 under the same interest and postage and admin for a total of $13,119.31. We had the, where we got to this thing was a, really the, the most concerning thing was the pool. That started out with a unserviceable pool. It was green. The screen structure around that was to the point that it was not keeping anybody or anything out. So they went through the process. The demolition removed the, the structure, the concrete driveways, walkways, chinkling fence, the in-ground concrete pool and the deck, and there were some other rodent control there. The property was purchased by the current owner in December of 2018 for $135,200. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
The current owner is not the person who had the problem. It was purchased after we took these code actions.
That's correct. The lien was filed back in September of 2018 and the house was purchased in December of 2018.
At $135,000?
$135,200. The most recent just value from the property appraisers is at $289,792.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? If not, we'll, we'll hear from the applicant as well, so. Or the applicant's representative, I believe?
Kenneth Bohannon, Cornell Law Group, 221 North Causeway, representing the property owners of Hartdorn. So I'm going to go back and first just adjust some of those numbers. So the current just value that was cited is 289,792. That included the structure that was there. Obviously, there's no structure there. I think next year you'll see a actual just value of somewhere in the range of about $150,000. So let's get rid of the 2, 289 portion of it. Let's also add in the fact that, again, this is not the same person who incurred the, the lien itself. And of course, there's two portions of it. One is demolition. At the time, Mr. Hartdorn purchased the property, he didn't actually realize that there was a lien on there. Not only did he not realize that the city had a lien for $13,000, but there was also a $145,000 lien from the IRS that was associated with the prior owner as well. So as part of the, the tax deed process, which is how this property is purchased, it was not a handshake deal. It was not arm-length transaction. It was, it was a tax deed sale. Part of that tax lien was resolved and part of the city's lien was also resolved. So out of the, the $13,000, the city has already received $6,466 and I think some change on there. So that really kind of lops your, your lien in half. So you've already been paid that. We've also had to pay about $120,000 towards the IRS lien, which still is out there in about $40,000 to $45,000, depending on which interest rate we're using. So what we're trying to do, or Mr. Hartdorn is trying to do, is really to be able to develop the site, to bring some value back, do some infill. In order to do that, he needs to get a reduction in the, in the amount of the lien so that he can clear title and move forward in the development of the property. So that's why we're here. So that's why we're here today, um, and trying to pick your eyes' brains on what you guys wanna hear. We do have an innocent party, uh, that purchased it with, with a lien. And that would seem to be the requirement that was, um, that was talked about with code enforcement. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, but, um, there's the facts as I know.
Okay. Just, Chief, you, you agree with the, the, or the attorney, maybe the, the amounts you quoted as far as being paid so far? I mean, is that, that jive with our records? The thirteen K is before the payments have been applied, or is that after the payments have been applied?
And I inherited this case, so I have case file that we did not, that I did not develop.
Okay.
I have no proof in, in the case file that there was any payment to the city. I'm not saying that there wasn't. I just have no proof in, in the case file.
I'm trying to get to the right page. I know that we received some excess proceeds that did, that were factored into the offset, um, if we just.
Yeah, I was trying to figure out if they were, I mean, I trust Mr. Bohannon, of course. I just wanna make sure that all our records are jiving.
What I just handed you was a, a copy of the check issued by the clerk of court in favor of the city and specifically to the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Silent group tonight. All right, I'll kick it off. Um, you know, these are, these are tough. Actually, I did have one question. Is the, is the IRS giving them a break as well, or?
We have not been able to, um, actually get to the right person in the IRS to even talk about it yet. So we're still, we're contemplating having to pay the forty thousand at this point, uh, which is just gonna delay us even further in the development of it. But if you think about it in values, we're losing, uh, more than probably half of the just value and the tax revenue associated with it. And we have just a vacant corner on Saxon right now, which could be developed into a nice single-family house or, or houses, depending on how it's, it's developed, uh, which is only gonna create a, a generation of revenue for the city. And this just helps pave the, the way to it. We talked about affordable housing on the last subject. I mean, this is, this is really it for, for this developer and being able to offer something out to the community.
Yeah. Yeah. These are tough because, I mean, we've certainly put in the time effort, staff has put in the time and effort to, to go through the process. We had negligent property owner that allowed property deteriorate and, um, you know, most government entities, IRS in this case, um, you know, they stick to their guns on that. But you also wanna, you know, you want to encourage and incentivize the right behavior. And in this case, the right behavior is someone coming in that's gonna clean the property up and, and do the right thing on the property. And so that, that's what makes these a, a tough balancing act for me. I struggle with each one individually. I'll just tell you that right off the bat. So it's my two cents.
Well, I'm gonna echo that. Um, yeah, I think we've gone both ways on this, on this board. I think historically, we've been a little more liberal. I think recently, we've been a little tougher. And this is one of those tough cases where we wanna be able to collect the money the city's owed, but we don't wanna create a hardship on a piece of property that's very developable. You know, so, um, I'd certainly like to know what the rest of the commission feels. I'm, I'm in favor for giving some kind of a, uh, reduction, although pretty, probably smaller than what the, uh, client uh, or the applicant would, would prefer. It's a tough one.
Yeah. And it, I think what makes it tough is, is you, you know, that I think this, this board before some of the new and even maybe since, you know, we, we, we have kind of bounced around and that makes it hard for the, you know, those that are considering investing to kind of know how we, how we might, how we might handle, so. I, I'm leaning towards just kind of drawing a hard line and, and that way liens will be baked into when someone considers buying a piece of property. There, there's still, there's still an economic case to be made. You pick up a piece of property on the cheap. Even, there's been quite a few that I've heard where we reduced the liens where there was still an ROI in the property. Maybe they took a little bit of a haircut, but there was still money to be made. But I am very sensitive to rundown properties that are not attractive either. Undeveloped properties don't pay any of our bills, so.
Well.
Mike.
I'm not in favor of it. I simply am not. There's due diligence. Any purchaser should really follow it. Uh, if it takes them longer to recoup, so be it.
Okay. All right, looking for, looking for a motion.
Well, we used to take these and cut it all the way down to staff time. And I know the community does not want us doing that anymore. They've been loud and clear about that. I do wanna recognize in some way that this applicant is not the one who created the problem. They're simply trying to create a positive outcome in the community. So I'm going to, I'm gonna ask that we pull a thousand dollars off this, um, off this lien. So we have a total of thirteen thousand ninety-four cents. We believe that he's paid, what is the amount that has been paid?
His paperwork shows six thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. This was not in the staff report.
So I'm not even gonna reference that. I'm gonna make a motion to reduce the lien by one thousand dollars, so it'll be twelve thousand ninety-four cents.
And we'll defer to staff to figure out the accounting behind the scenes. Got it? You okay with that so far, Carrie?
It's a thousand dollars off.
Thousand dollars off, so if there's already been an amount paid.
Total right now on the, on the report is thirteen thousand ninety-four cents.
Okay.
So I'm gonna reduce that to twelve thousand ninety-four cents or one thousand dollars off.
I'd, I'd say maybe we frame the motion as a thousand dollars off the amount owed that leaves staff the ability to.
Thousand dollars off the lien.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm gonna hear the second on that motion. Motion dies for lack of a second. See, I don't think I can make a motion.
Uh, I will make a motion that the request for lien amnesty be, be denied.
I'll second.
Make a motion in the positive.
Yeah, it gets confusing when you start voting yes, no of what you're actually voting for. So you always wanna frame it in the positive, even if you're not for it. It just gets the, the question on the floor, so it can be voted up or down.
And it's already died once, so I don't think you have to do another one.
I will make a motion that it be approved, the lien, amnesty lien be approved.
We appreciate your support.
Can I withdraw my second?
No, no, you, no, you make the second.
The second just moves it on for.
Make the second and then vote no. All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. City Clerk.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
No.
Commissioner Colodey.
No.
Commissioner Sacks.
No.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
No.
So, hold on a second. We denied the motion to reduce it, and then we denied the motion to approve it.
Yeah, so there was a motion before us to reduce the amount owed.
Right, which I made in a second.
No, the motion was to reduce it. The, his, his amnesty request was denied, yeah.
Right. And it's not really an amnesty. It's a reduction in the.
I know, yeah. We, we talked about that language. Thank you. Next item up, two seventeen Sandy Lane. Chief.
Very similar to the last case, um, with the exception of this one, uh, ran from about two thousand and fourteen until the present. Uh, this house was a, a smaller property that had a tree through the roof. A current owner purchased the property in November of two thousand eighteen on a foreclosure auction for seven thousand dollars. The current just value is at twenty-six, four ninety-two. Uh, the lien that we have, uh, well, let me, let me back up. The condemnation lien is, is at, um, seventy-three hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-one cents, which includes interest, postage, and, and admin. The fines on the nuisance, uh, are, are much more than that. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, the, the reason for that is it, it ran from January of two thousand fifteen to the present.
Okay. Applicant would like to speak. Any questions for staff before? If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to talk. Um, when we purchased the lien, uh, when we purchased the property, we were aware of it, but we didn't know the size of it. We tried to find out what the amount was. We thought it was in the region of about ten thousand at the time when we bought it. But we didn't even know about the demolition at that time, so. But we had no knowledge of the size of these liens. And the whole intent was to purchase a property for somebody to develop into a house that wanted to buy it.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So I'll, I'll lead off.
I just one, one question. Uh, the lien was in place and properly noticed, public record, prior to the purchase.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Carrie, and I hate to put you on the spot. I should've asked beforehand, but do we have maximums on these? Do they just accrue in perpetuity?
It just continues to accrue.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, or if not, do I have a motion on this item? Again, remember to make the motion in the affirmative and then let your vote reflect the opinion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a move to approve the lien amnesty or lien reduction request. City Clerk.
Commissioner Colodey.
No.
Commissioner Sacks.
No.
Commissioner McGurk.
No.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
No.
Mayor Owen.
No. Okay. And the one for eight oh one has been continued. Yeah, those are, those are tough. All right, item eight A. That's not the one we moved. No, that's nine eight. All right. Second reading's a public hearing. Ordinance fifteen nineteen. City Attorney, uh, we're gonna conduct the second reading in public hearing of an ordinance which, if adopted, will amend chapter fifty-eight Parks and Rec. City Attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number fifteen nineteen, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, amending chapter fifty-eight Parks and Recreation, section fifty-eight two, to provide for updated locations, hours, and standard signage, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a staff report on this. Faith, welcome back.
This ordinance at second reading, it's basically a, a cleanup ordinance. You had an ordinance on the books that identified all the parks in the city. Several of them are no longer in existence, and some of the new parks are not listed on here. So this ordinance cleans up that list and also provides language for, um, signage that we wanna put at the parks about all the rules that apply at parks. No littering, pick-up after your dog, those kind of things are listed in here. If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions for Faith? Yep.
Faith, if you don't mind, uh, at the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Park, um, there's a gate. And as I understand, the gate is not open until nine AM. Is there any way we can amend that to open it sooner?
That is also part, that particular park is part of the Marine Discovery Center. Um, they use their volunteers to open the gate. That was part of their agreement. I, I don't, no, I assume it's possible we could open it earlier if that's the choice.
If you recall, Commissioner Sacks, uh, you requested that the volunteers were, they couldn't team up with the park. So we turned to staff in order to see if we could manage that, and I think that's the earliest. But if you wanted it any earlier, then we have to.
We'd have to, we could have our, um, janitorials, uh, the restroom staff that come in earlier, open it earlier. That's the.
So we were trying to address one issue and then another issue popped up.
I understand that. I, I also understand it, it is an increased burden to staff, but I would, I can't consider opening a park at nine AM when most of our parks are open at sunset, a sunrise. So if you could make it, I don't know, eight o'clock? I mean, it was, I understand staff does the maintenance at Twenty-seventh Avenue, you know, some.
Right, they are out there.
In the area, so if we could get them down there sooner to open that gate, I would greatly appreciate it for our constituents.
I don't know if that would require an amendment to the Marine Discovery Center agreement.
Find out if, if we have staff to open it, the earliest they could open it up.
And, and they wish, I was told that they wish not to, um, be a part of that agreement. It, it is a burden to the, uh, to the volunteers, and I'm concerned for the safety of the volunteers, uh, that, that open that gate. So if we could have staff do it at an earlier time.
I'm just saying that's an existing agreement, so I'm not sure how.
But we have to amend the.
Right.
We could either continue this item for a report back, um, or we would need to make a decision tonight on the opening times. It's in the text.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
Continue?
Good to continue. Second.
So before we, we have one discussion item since we're looking at it, can you just look into it? I don't have to discuss it here, but maybe offline we can talk about it. But I noticed, um, many of, many of the parks were open until, there was sunrise to sunset, but many had called-out hours until eleven PM. Pettus Park was until nine PM, I think it was. I just wondered why the, why the difference for that park specifically. And so if we can just look at that and.
Some of those were in place, prior resolutions, prior actions by the commission and.
Yeah, okay.
You know, sunrise, if we could do them all sunrise to sunset, that would be the easiest.
When I get for the ones that are used for, you know, more like beach parking or fishing pier type access and things, that, that makes, that makes sense. But, um, anyway, just that one jumped out to me. So if we can take a look at that and just be able to explain it or, or change it, so.
Okay.
All right, so we had a motion to continue this.
I just had one point. So we've officially renamed AOB to waterfront promenade?
I mean, it's not officially, but that's the name that we're still be using now. I mean, the AOB is not an official name anyway. It's.
Okay. The sewer plant.
It's a made-up name.
What can I say?
Just so everybody knows.
It's NSB Waterfront Promenade.
Do, do you want it to be the, the Hartman waterfront promenade?
Oh, yeah.
Good answer.
Just one comment.
Sure.
Uh, we have so many different parks and different reasons for them and different uses. It would be nice if we could have more flexibility in this ordinance so that if, if the staff felt it appropriate to change it by an hour or two, that that be their decision.
Yeah, and I, I think, I can't get it to pull up for some reason, but I, I thought I read there was some, there was some flexibility in there, I thought.
There's certain parks that, um, you know, where Leisure Services Director has contracts, so it'll say hours to be determined by Leisure Services Director, but not all of them. You know, the baseline is sunrise to sunset. Then you have these other ones you've mentioned, and then you have these other facilities.
Okay.
Could we extend that to all the parks?
Giving that.
That flexibility.
Doesn't bother me in the least, but.
That way we wouldn't have to revise this ordinance so frequently.
Extend it to all the parks that you would change the hours?
I'm thinking it would be worded some, somewhat like, um, as determined by the city manager, who can then delegate it to whichever appropriate person.
I think that's not assigned, though.
Well, the hours, no, the hours would be, the hours could be posted. The notion is, do we have to come back? If they wanted to extend and, extend it by a half an hour, an hour, do we, do we really need to be opining on that, to be honest?
I don't think we enforce it much now, so.
It's what I'm saying.
Right.
I have.
The, the, we could take it out and, and try to treat it either via a resolution or just have something that, that defers it to the city manager.
I am very comfortable deferring it to, to staff, and if we have an issue, trust me, we'll, some commissioner in the future will bring it up. So I'm, I'm okay with that. I don't wanna be quibbling over what hours parks open and close.
Have we, um, do we have a motion right now on this?
Well, we, yeah, because it's a, it's a second reading.
Okay.
We didn't think of this on the first reading conveniently, so. We have a motion on the, on the table right now. It's a table and a second, if I recall. And so we can table it and then we can give staff. can table it, and then we can give staff some direction to basically change it and go from there.
Very good. I'll call the question.
Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Okay, so I think what we're gonna do is ask staff to just revise this to give authority to city staff delegated via city manager to set the hours as appropriate. Thank you, Faith. Nancy?
I hope you haven't printed the signs. I hope you haven't printed the signs already.
Again, the hours can stay the same. It's just, enjoy your new power, Nancy. Changing park hours all over town. All right. Item B, quasi judicial public hearing, number CCSL two dash nineteen.
Please state your name.
Brian Scott Fields.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, real quick, Brian, before you do that, in accordance with city code section two dash one four seven, this is the time to declare any ex parte communications. So, if you've driven by the site, talked to the site owner, emailed the site owner, thought about the site too much. No, I'm just kidding. That's about the only thing you don't have to declare. So, any, any things to declare? Vice Mayor, Commissioner McGurk? I have none.
I'll declare that I viewed the site.
Okay. Colodey?
None.
All right, we're all good. Thank you, Brian. Uh, yeah, sorry, it's my part. Full legal name, educational, professional background, please.
Brian Scott Fields. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Maryland, a Master's in Business Administration from the University of Florida. Uh, my position with the city is the Director of Development Services and Coastal Environmental Resiliency. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. I have twenty-four years of experience in land development, engineering, planning, permitting, public administration, and related services.
Any member of the commission of the audience was to question Mr. Fields on his professional qualifications. If there are no objections, uh, we'll qualify him as an expert witness in the area of land development. Um, determined to be an expert and qualified to give opinion testimony concerning these matters. Mr. Fields, are you familiar and please state whether this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and your recommendation?
The recommendation, um, isn't exactly in line with the comprehensive plan. Um, I'd like to go through the staff report and, and kind of state my position based on that.
Okay.
Um, this is a request to approve an after-the-fact dune walkover, um, east of the city's coastal construction setback line at four zero six one Hill Street, on the east side of Hill Street between Twenty-ninth Avenue and Sandpiper. The applicant obtained approval from Volusia County and FDEP to construct the dune walkover. However, um, the applicant proceeded with construction before obtaining the city commission's approval of the CCSL encroachment and before obtaining a building permit from the city. Per the staff report, the applicant indicated that there was not enough time to obtain city commission approval before the turtle nesting season started, so the applicant went ahead with construction and then applied for a building permit on April nineteenth, twenty nineteen. The dune walkover, as constructed, and there are pictures of it in your staff report, um, does meet the criteria, um, where applicable for construction seaward of the coastal construction line. Um, while staff does not condone construction without permits or any required city commission approval, staff believes, based on our review of this particular case, that at this point in time, the dune would be most protected by approving the CCSL, subject to the conditions noted in the staff report, including a dune replanting plan, informational signage to be installed, and charging the double permit fee for an after-the-fact building permit, uh, whi- which would be required within ninety days. So, it, as built, it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan. Um, however, given those conditions in summary, staff does recommend the city commission approve this encroachment.
Okay. What would that, what would the permit fee normally have been, and what would the, I can double it.
There's a dollar amount in, in front of me for it. The applicant's here, he may have it. It's probably a couple hundred dollars, normal permit, and a couple hundred on top of that for doubling.
Any member of the commission liked to question him. Yes, Colodey?
Yes. Uh, I have not been to the site, but, uh, from looking at the information, it appears it's adjacent to a road that has access directly to the beach? Yes. Okay, that was my question. Now, my comment is, these reviewing agencies gave permission for a walkover, an extensive walkover, when there is an easy way to get to the beach from their property. I understand the predicament that they're in right now, but I think the fault, if there is any, was in those reviewing agencies and granting the permits.
Okay. Any other member was to question?
Yep.
Yes, I have one.
Hang on.
I'm not ready.
I got him queued up, and then you. He's probably getting that permit amount, I'm betting.
Go ahead, if you, something you want to comment?
Uh, just, just to clarify, there is a road adjacent to it that is available as a walking path. It's not as direct as the dune walkover, however, there is a, pedestrian access is available.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of things. One is, I guess, reading staff's report, as best I can understand, the person applied to DEP, the person applied to county, got those permits, but wasn't gonna get the city's permit in time before turtle nesting season. Is that what happened?
Uh, that, that's what was claimed. The applicant, I don't know, is the applicant here?
So, the applicant, well, let me, let me just come up.
That's what he, that's what it's indicated to our staff.
So, they went ahead and did it before turtle nesting season, and that's it, basically?
Yes. We became aware of it by the submittal of the building permit.
And the structure is built to the specifications as it would for us to submit a permit.
Yes.
The only issue is, is that the person chose to do it before turtle, chose to do it before they got the permit to be turtle nesting season, which is, Jake, what's turtle nesting season? I'm gonna defer to you.
It started, it did start, because they're nesting.
Okay.
End of April, May first?
Yeah. Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I had all those facts correct. And Commissioner Colodey, I don't think, you know, my personal opinion on that, on, on your comment is, is that someone's private, it's kind of like your property. You, you can get to the river by using your buddy, your neighbor's dock. I, I think a road next to the property is not necessarily, I don't think it has anything to do with an individual property owner's right to be able to have a walkover to the beach. Um, but I just wanted to make sure I understood the situation. And do we have any way to, authority to assess a fine greater than double what the permit would be?
No. No, it would be just double permit fees as our...
So, what happens if we denied this? I mean, we can't deny the permit, right? In other words, you can't deny the permit if it's gonna be structurally, if the request is, is sound, correct?
We wouldn't process it without the city commission approval first, and, and then they would be able, they have to include that with the building.
But the city commission has no grounds to deny the request, right? How exactly, do, I'm, I, I ask that quite, it's a question, not a statement.
Well... Well, Carrie's thinking. I'll let Carrie contemplate on that for a minute.
Sure.
And we'll let, we'll let Jake, Jake had a question.
Yes, that was basically the question. When, when we doubled the, the fine for not uh, getting a permit before building is doubling the permit fee. And since you don't have those numbers, I would also like to see a change somewhere down the road, that we increase those fines. It's, would be incumbent upon the builder to comply with our rules. Uh, you know, he's building a compatible feature, but at the same time, he didn't get his permit. And can I be assured that they will have the other agencies require them to have a dune restoration plan and signage that says, "Do not disturb the dunes," and those other, conditions? That, that's my big concern.
That was one of the things I think they noted for us to be included, right?
We would require that as conditions of our approval, and then we also do require verification of the outside agency permits as well.
So, it, it says the criteria for city commission approval. The commission may approve a requen, a request upon determining the request meets all of the following criteria. So, if it meets the criteria, it's not that your hands are tied, but if it meets the criteria, that they've proved their case.
So, the issue in my mind is, we only get to stick them with a double the permit fee, which is a couple hundred bucks, which, that kind of stinks.
Any other questions for Mr. Fields? We've yet to hear from the applicant, which we're gonna absolutely give them their chance to speak and be questioned as well. I just had one, one question. So, I mean, this one is, there's a nuance to this, that it's the CCSL, and that's why we're even involved. If this were just your average, I built a shed in my backyard, didn't ask, got a, didn't get a permit, came in and applied for a permit after it got discovered, um, what would the building department's options be? Would you be able to look at the shed and say, eh, you didn't build it to code, and you can, you have to tear it down and rebuild it? Or what, what are the, what are the remedies in that case?
After the fact is double permit fee. If, um, if in this case, the, the permit was denied, or the commission denied it, I, I think in this would be, um, it would be closed down. It's currently closed down. It's blocked off from access. They'd have to wait until after the nesting season and then remove it.
And then go through the whole process. I guess what I'm, what I was driving at is, in a normal case, when this is done, um, i- if this happens, and I say normal, I don't think it happens all that often. I hope not. Um, the, the, the instance of having it, having it removed is usually if it's been done not to standard. I mean, the, the penalty is paying the double permit fee, but if it's been done according to the permit requirements, we would typically allow that to stay. I know I'm putting you in a spot.
Generally, if a building was built and it was non-conforming...
Yeah.
Then it would be subject to code enforcement action.
Right. Okay. Which is the, the opposite of what I said, but saying the same thing.
Which is not the case.
Which is not the case, and that's the, and that's the point, is this one is conforming. It meets the requirements. So, I, I thoroughly agree with staff's assessment. This is absolutely the exception, not the rule. I, I, did I catch in what you said that they had already done it before they even applied for the permit, though?
Yeah.
It wasn't like they came in, tried to apply, and were told, oh, it's gonna take five weeks, and they said, well, it's turtle nesting season, gotta get this done.
That's correct.
They just did it, then came and got the permit. That's the part that actually troubles me the most.
We got the permit on April nineteenth, so, um, would have been very difficult to submit a permit on nineteenth and get it built, inspected, and complete prior nesting season. So, they, they were way late in getting it into us.
Yeah. No, I hear you, but the fact that it was already built. I mean, the one thing they had walked in, gotten that news, and said, no, it's not gonna work for me. I gotta do it quicker, you know, as they're standing there. But the, the fact that it was done before they ever even approached the permit office is, is a bit concerning, but...
The other thing that concerns me is it's a local builder, so he knows better, should have known better. I mean, would it not have been a code issue for him even starting the structure without a permit?
Yes. Yeah, if he became aware of it, it would have been subject to code enforcement at that point.
Yeah.
Well, my, my own comment would be...
Okay.
Is that simply could have waited till after the turtle season.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that to me would have been the thing. Um, irregardless of the, uh, concerns I have over the other agencies giving the permit, uh, I think it would be counterproductive to ask them to remove it at this point. So, I ju- I just don't like the process. I don't like the fact it was done ahead of time. But, um, taking all that into account...
Let's, let's hear from the applicant.
Oh, yes.
All right. Does the applicant, does the applicant wish to speak, or any witnesses applicant would like to bring? All right. Applicant is not here. Okay, sorry. Guess we're not gonna hear from the applicant. Uh, any member of the...
Public.
Public wish to speak on this item? Please limit your remarks to items, so do you have personal knowledge? No members of the public wish to speak. All right. Back to discussion. Any closing remarks? Brian, any closing remarks? Any closing questions for the staff? All right. Do I have a motion to approve application number CCSL two dash nineteen? Allowing for a dune walkover. To be clear, that motion would...
Well, we gotta do it. Can't, can't let the motion fail.
We gotta do something.
We have to act, because it's an applicant-driven application.
So, to make very clear, I don't think any of us are very happy about this. And I think that the double the permit fee, which is essentially a couple hundred bucks, the guy play, he played the system perfectly, and it's gonna come out his benefit. He should have waited a few months. There's nothing we can do, and other than, he's gonna pay that few hundred bucks extra. I don't think anyone likes it, but the bottom line is, the structures and compliance would have to be approved. So, I'm gonna make the motion to approve with staff's conditions and has to meet all the criteria.
One second. Any other discussion?
Just one question.
Okay.
Prior to the state and the county granting their approvals, do we receive notice that they've been applied for those permits?
No.
Okay.
What happened is they will give the applicant a copy of the permit, and he will submit that when he submits the city's permit. But they don't send the notification saying we have issued a permit for this.
Okay. Uh, I echo Commissioner McGurk's comments. I think we have some, uh, I won't call them loopholes, but probably weaknesses, uh, that this has highlighted, uh, that I'm sure staff will, will contemplate and may consider bringing back some, some changes to just give us a little more teeth. I think in this case, it's probably working out about like it would have if it had gone the regular route. Um, but that's not always the case, and I don't like having options if that would, if it had been different, this could have been, put us in a really bad spot. So, um, I have a motion in a second. City Clerk?
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey?
No.
Commissioner Sax?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that.
Hold on.
And then what? And, and you know, and then we gotta go rip it out and do more damage to the dunes, and then replant the oats, and then they're gonna come and apply, and they're gonna meet all the criteria, and we're gonna prove it. And it's just...
No, I know.
I mean, it's tough.
Bad all around.
It is, it really is, so. All right. Item C, conducted quasi judicial public hearing for historic tree removal. Da-da-da-da-da. Well, I'll conduct a quasi judicial public hearing. Same thing, any ex parte communications to disclose, ex parte communications to disclose, Vice Mayor.
I drive by the place daily.
Yep. Commissioner McGurk?
I have anything else at this time?
None.
Yeah, none. Same, but I drive by it, but, yeah. All right, uh, you're still under oath. Are you familiar with the application?
Yes.
Please state whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and your recommendation.
Staff's recommendation is to deny, um, so therefore would not be consistent with the comprehensive plan, um, as you hear in our brief staff report.
Okay. So, if you can provide the staff report.
Okay. This is a request for removal of one thirty-nine inch historic oak tree on an undeveloped lot on the north side of Canal Street, west of Hickory Street, and east of Pioneer Trail. Um, just as a quick reminder, our new historic tree ordinance, which was adopted in early April, has an effective date of June first, so that new criteria does not apply to this application. Um, going back to the February twelfth city commission meeting at February, in twenty nineteen, the commission approved a special exception at this property to allow a self-storage use on a portion of the property that's zone B three. No site plan has been formally submitted for staff review. Uh, the applicant seeking first a ruling on the proposed removal of the historic tree, which will impact the site layout for the proposed storage buildings. Subject tree is a healthy thirty-nine inch live oak located on the center of the property. A conceptual site plan showing the location of the trees included in your, your agenda packet as exhibit E. Um, there is one other historic tree on the site. Um, we, we do commend the applicant. They were, um, able to work around that, and, um, at least based on the concept plan, that one other tree would... tree would be preserved. The current conceptual plan proposes sixty storage units and would require removal of the historic tree. It's in the center of the property, it's in the center of a drive lane. As shown, it would require removal of the tree. Staff reviewed it, we did meet with the, with the architect, and we prepared a rough sketch and determined that the site plan could be modified to preserve the tree. However, this would reduce the storage unit count by an estimated ten to twenty units. So that sixty would become somewhere between forty and fifty by removing units, allowing the access road to be routed around the subject historic tree. So this was a tough one for our staff to review. We looked at all aspects of it, however, our recommendation is to deny in this case on the basis that it is feasible to preserve the tree and still construct a reasonably sized self-storage facility on the property. I know representatives of the applicant are here and would like to address the commission.
Okay. We'll hear from them in a moment, but first, any questions from the commission for Mr. Fields?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With the information that's been submitted to you to date, do you know if there will be the need to raise the elevation where the tree is significantly to meet our own standards and flood planes, et cetera?
They will need to do some fill to raise the road and the building pads above existing elevation. So that's why we conservatively estimated to save the tree, you'd have to route, remove buildings and route the road a significant distance at, say, the drip line to preserve the tree.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Fields on his testimony? Now, we'll hear from the applicant, and any witnesses choose to present.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jay Pendragast. I'm the architect on the project.
Jay, we gotta, we gotta swear in over here.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Of course. If I may, I made copies of the arborist report and his PowerPoint presentation. I'd like to give them to the commissioners if that's...
Sure.
So, actually, this is kind of a, we're back. We're back again. And we did the special exception, and, and actually developed the site plan exactly to what the commission was requesting. And in doing that, when we hired an arborist, we discovered this historic tree that happens to be in the middle of the driveway. The other tree I had, I suspected was a significant, excuse me, and did design around it. However, the second tree, it's just in a very bad spot. And it's a nice tree. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you it's an ugly tree, it's a very nice tree. But I think what we're here to discuss tonight is really logical growth and economic development. I mean, we're looking at a tree, and what will the tree contribute, and what will our project contribute to you? With the special exception, we agreed to lushly landscape the property. We agreed to build a nice quality building, the projects in compliance with the land development code, the projects in compliance with the future land use, in my opinion. And, and probably the most important thing is, this is a low-impact project. It's a piece of property that sat there forever, undeveloped, not generating any income for the city. And, and actually, the use that we came up with, it makes minimum demands on the infrastructure, because the infrastructure between water, sewer, and electric in that neighborhood is not very good. The use of this site, it's not gonna import, uh, impact the schools, the library, the fire, the police. This is really pretty much a low-impact project. So we really felt that it was the highest and best use for the project, for the property. And, and then I also looked at, like, the economic income, the impact of this project. I mean, we're developing, redeveloping a blighted area that really looks quite terrible right now. And, and what that's going to do is, it's gonna create increased commercial property tax revenue. It's also gonna bring in new sales tax revenues. And I really do believe that increased revenues are a good way to help the citizens of New Smyrna, because we all know that our commercial base is much smaller. We have like an eighty-five fifteen ratio, which is kind of low. The other, the other thing to look at about this tree is, this is also supporting local businesses. You're looking at a project that's locally owned, it's not a franchise. You're looking at a team that is, it's a local architect, local civil engineer, local arborist, local surveyor, local contractor. All of the funds generated on this project are gonna be spent in New Smyrna. This is not like hiring somebody from Alabama and approving their site and sending, you know, your revenue off to Alabama.
Why isn't it gonna be Bama?
Actually, it could be any one of those forty-nine other states. I was just referencing a, a recent project. So at any rate, I think what we're really looking at is the, the value of keeping this tree, and possibly, I mean, the, the financial impact on our project, if we were to lose ten to twenty units, that's, that's significant. I mean, if it was one or two units, it's like, yeah, you know, everybody can play. But no, this is, this is really, really a significant reduction. And as Commissioner Colodey pointed out, in order to meet the height requirements for the water and everything, we're gonna have to raise the site. So the roots of that tree would be impacted. And we're also creating an obstacle, because now we're driving around a tree. Emergency vehicles, God forbid they have to get into that property, would be dividing, going down a little circular route. I, I just don't think it's very practical. I'm gonna ask Ray to speak. He, he gave a very mu- a very good report on the tree, and compared it to other things, and, and I, I believe he could answer your questions regarding the tree.
Okay.
Commissioners, Mayor?
Ray?
Uh, my name is Ray, I'm sorry?
Gotta have you swear in real quick.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Ray Jarrett. I'm a New Smyrna resident. I'm a consulting arborist, and I'm glad to answer any questions about my report, presentation.
Okay. So remember, the commission was to question the applicant's or their witnesses. I'd, I have to say, my colleagues will chime in, but very well-done presentation. I mean, I'd just have a chance to flip through it here, but I think you've, you've kind of summarized the, the struggle sometimes we, we have with these, with these applications, at least that I personally have, is, you know, what, the, the few examples you cited here. Johnny, if you'll flip a few more slides, actually, one more slide ahead of that one the other way. Keep going. Keep going. More, further. The Home Depot one.
I'm going the wrong direction, I think.
Yeah, the, back the other way. Anyway, the, the slides that show the Home Depot...
Yeah, the Home Depot and the Dunkin' Donuts are great examples.
Go back one, Johnny, now. There you go, that one. So, I mean, I've kind of been watching, I, I have this thing, I love our historic oak trees, my home has tons of them around it. As I walk in places like this, I have a tendency to look up and admire the canopies. And I've been watching these trees at Home Depot, and they are not going to survive. I mean, this, this...
Their reliability.
This method of construction around them like this is just not sustainable. And so there's a, a, a point that we have to contemplate, is it better to do this, or is it better to go ahead and plant new ones, as you pointed out later in the presentation, back where these are, so that my children will have trees to enjoy that are the same size by the time they are, you know, coming along. So it, it's not perfect, I hate it. I love trees, I designed my house around trees. This is not the only tree that has to be removed. It's just the only historic tree. I mean, we sometimes take a little flack when all of a sudden, then, you know, there's a lot more trees that have to come down. And that's not gonna be pretty when it starts, but anyway, that's just my, my comments. But well, well done on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment for staff.
Sure.
Brian, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I am a little bit. This is a, you know, we just passed this new tree ordinance, and this is a great situation for me to put you on the spot, too. So I apologize in advance. Staff's recommendation is to deny. You're my expert. I need to be able to rely on you to make that call. The fundamental question that I have to determine is, is this project feasible if we make them keep the tree? We don't know. And my question to you is, do you know, is there a method or a way that you can tell me whether or not this project is cost feasible? You know, if I asked them, or the developer in this case, very likely, some would argue that they're not gonna be straight. So I need some way to determine whether or not, if I deny him the, this, this, this tree to be taken down, that it basically kills the project, which I don't want to do. Where is that threshold? How do we determine it?
It's a judgment call. I think, in this case, it is feasible, and I, I think this is an example in development situations where we get backed in the situations where it's this product on this site in this layout, and it's, it's difficult, no doubt, to change from what they have in mind. But that's not the only way to develop on this site, and there's other ways of doing it. In, in this particular manner, it's challenging to work around this tree, and, and in a way that would make the tree healthy and still survive. However, there, there are ways to do it, and we identified a, a very basic way. It impacts the site development. There are other way, things they could do to offset that, it would be a cost increase. But I think we, we ended up on the side, side that it is feasible to have a project on this site and save the tree.
Thank you.
So when, when you say you presented other options, others that, because the, up to thirty-three percent reduction in units, I mean, it seems like that would, I mean, I haven't seen their financial model, I have no clue, but it seems like it'd be, that's a bit of a haircut. So you presented some that wouldn't do that. I mean, could you use more space on the back end? I mean, were there other things, or, or was that basically it, just less density?
Right now, pretty much you take out setbacks, and pretty much every square foot that's allowed to be used is shown with one-story self-storage. And they did some things, acknowledged that we wanted, like not having the garages face the street. However, you could go slightly larger for some buildings, a little bit higher. And second story is difficult without an elevator and storage facilities, or concentrate more in some areas, or even possibly ask for a, like a setback waiver as an offset to, to preserve the tree, might be something that we could consider. But we, we did a sketch showing, you know, that takes out fifteen units. That was just one option, just kind of, when we met. So it is feasible.
Take out fifteen units?
Well, it, it works minus fifty, sixty to forty-five, it's twenty-five percent reduction.
There must be a lot of meat on that bone in this business.
Is a special exception for self-storage. Self-storage at one story is a product that they're gonna maximize the surface area that they have it on the site.
You know, I agree with the mayor. You see Home Depot, we watch Publix, all their trees eventually failed, or, you know, got to that point. I was involved in a project in Orange County, and we desperately tried to save two of them, and it took them about five to seven years, and, you know, we lost them both. So you can't save them all, but if we can replace them with younger, healthier trees, you know, that we, that the community can benefit from later, I think that's an option. But it's a tough one.
And I'll say, Brian has given me a lot to, to think about. I, I, you know, the, we, it's, it's negotiation, it's anchoring. I mean, we've anchored on this, and so now seeing anything different than this, it's, you know, it's a reduction of twenty-five percent, or thirty-three, or whatever the number is. But if, he's right, I mean, there are other, there are other ways to get there. There are other things that might could be asked for. I, I think I said at the last, when this was approved originally, I know I asked specifically about the trees. I think I said at that point, or maybe I've said another time about, you know, I am willing to give up a little bit of buffer space if we can preserve it. I am, I would be willing to look at the setbacks a little bit in particular cases, but so, interesting.
What is the, Mayor, if I may, I have a question. What is, for the applicant, Jay? What's the possibility of reducing the setbacks to be able to give you more room to work around the tree?
Well, that would certainly be a, an option. I mean, part of the one-story project is, is for basically boat storage. So, I mean, you really don't take boats to the second floor. But, so, I mean, dump, you know, double stacking these, this is not, we're not trying to build a dry stack area. And the other thing is, is everything else around there is one story. So all of a sudden, we would now be the tallest thing.
Well, I agree with that. I'm not, the setbacks, the setbacks is what I'm interested in.
The setbacks are pretty onerous. I mean, you've got a forty-foot setback on Canal Street, and that parcel behind it goes to a residential area that has a twenty-five foot buffer. So of the parcel, the, on Hickory, it's only a hundred and twenty feet deep, and sixty-five feet of it, we already cannot touch. It's just, you know, off the table.
So this, this, this property butts up against residential, which gives you your twenty-five foot buffer?
Correct.
And this was our problem on US one. And we reduced that buffer because it just wasn't practical. What about your side? In other words, your, your side yard setbacks, are you able to, what, what is side yard setbacks?
One side yard, the side yard to the west is, is a seven-and-a-half foot setback.
Yeah.
You know, there's not much, there's really not much you can do. And staff was asking us to not disturb the trees along the bank of the drainage canal. So there's really not much that can be, can happen on the west side. On the east side, we have, because it backs up to residential properties, we have a twenty-five foot buffer. So that's really pushing us towards the center.
So if we, if, in theory, if that setback, side setback to the east was reduced to, say, ten feet, does that give you enough to work with to be able to do what you need to do around that tree? Because I can tell you, I can speak from experience. Twenty? When you talk, go ahead.
I think it would make it extremely, extremely tight. I mean, there's, you know, you never say never. There's no, you know, there's always a possibility. But just looking at the, at the diagram that we have here, if we were to push it over, the seven-and-a-half feet would be this line here. And the wi- the width of the road is, you know, twenty-two feet. So if we pick up, you know, ten with a buffer reduction, we, we're still at a deficit as far as the distance we have to stay away from the roots, you know, the way we have to curve around the tree. So, and then on the other side, we can't move it at all. So it's, it's doubtful that we could really make that happen. I mean, and preserve the size. See, the other thing is, you know, you don't want, you can't, it doesn't make any sense to do like a ten-foot wide storage unit. This is not mini storage, this is for boats. So, I mean, you know, the trailer and everything needs to park in the garage, so, I mean, you have a certain dimension, you need at least twenty feet. You know, you're not gonna get anything, and, you know, if you, if you can make it fourteen feet or something, that's just not going to meet the, you know, the business plan for this. I mean, we're not, we're, we're really going for boats. We're not going, this is not a mini warehouse for household supplies, you know. So, and that makes it a little bit more difficult also, because, you know, you have turning radiuses, you, you know, you know, it's, it's just more, you know, logistically complicated.
Right, I understand. Bro, last question. Brian, what would be the process if we, i- i- if, if we wanted to grant him a reduction in the side yard setback, what would be that process? What would be that process under this kind of situation?
You have to apply for a variance to go to the planning and zoning board.
Right, okay. Wow, we know how well that works out. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We've granted a special exception. He's been to the planning board, got all the approvals. I've always found fault with this, the application of our historic tree ordinance. Because this particular situation should have come up long ago, before they invested all the money and all the application fees and all the approvals. I've taken a long, hard look at this. Granting us, changing the setback would impinge upon the residential areas. I don't want to do that. Everything's gone through the approval process. I would love to see the tree saved. I don't think that's practical. With all the approvals and guidance that we've given, at this point to say, this tree stops the development, I don't think is appropriate. As long as these replacement trees go on public property at the location we want, I, I would support the removal.
Okay.
Just to clarify, and replacement trees, they would go first on their properties, first option?
They would not go on their property, because they have a very heavily wooded portion that's staying to begin with. And whether the new live oaks or whatever go back in there, I don't even know if they'd survive at this point because of the canopy. So I want them out on our parks, on our golf courses, any one of our other facilities.
Okay.
I, I understand what you're saying. I agree, but I, I don't know what the exact layout is of this property. I mean, if you've looked at the, if you've looked at the ser, tree survey and determined where they're gonna build and made that determination, that's wonderful. But I would hate to tell them, not that they can't put any of those trees on that property, when they may be removing a number of them for the project.
Their, their, their expert has said they'll be planted on our property. So I'd take him at his word.
Okay. I have just one question for city attorney, and then we'll hear from members of the public, and then we'll put this item to bed. State legislator passed a law. I think it goes into effect June first.
It's residential properties.
Ah, okay, got it. Okay. We'll now hear from members of the public. Any members of the public wish to speak for or against, or just in general on this item? Please. Please limit your remarks to matters of which you have personal knowledge, and city attorney will swear you in.
Gary Wilkins, five-two-nine Prado Street, New Smyrna Beach.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are out to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I was at the last meeting when this first came for the first reading. And I've looked at the property. And I've been up and down forty-four personally, looking at the different areas. One of our main concerns is the tree situation as buffer zones. And I just wanted to make sure, as in the discussion, I'm not totally sure what I was hearing. I wouldn't hate to see any reduction in the buffer zone along Canal Street in order to placate this situation. Because to me, the, we already have the severe problems like with the GOSAM site, the, all those car dealerships, and retention of these wooded buffers in the areas we have left. I'd hate to see any kind of action taken that would reduce that buffer zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Does any, does anyone wish to question the witness? No. Any other members of the public wish to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Any closing remarks from the city or the applicant? Okay. Public hear, yes, sorry, you have closing comments.
I would just like to say that I think that you actually are getting more by allowing us to remove the tree and to put in new, better trees on city property. I think that does more for the citizens than by keeping this one lonely tree.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Any further question, discussion by the commission? If not, do I have a motion to approve HTR one-dash-nineteen to allow for the removal of historic oak tree?
I will make that motion.
Second.
For clarity in the motion, as proposed, I think it would just fall under our normal tree removal and replacement guidelines as to where the replacement trees have to go. Okay?
That's correct. And I do want to point out that there was one minor mistake in the report from Mr. Jarrett, where it comes to, this would plant three new six-inch trees, and it's really six. He added in parentheses, correct, but the number was wrong. Either option is fine, as city staff finds appropriate.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Johnny?
Commissioner Collody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
No.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
No.
Mayor Owen?
You guys are killing me.
I'm gonna vote no. I'm gonna ask you to work with staff. Staff's recommendation was to look at some other options. I'm intrigued. I'm not completely opposed to it. If we completely meet an impasse, I do agree with the gentleman's comments about greatly reducing setbacks. But I'd like to just see staff's witnesses that there were some other possibilities, so.
May I ask staff a question?
Sure.
If this, since the vote did not, was, since the vote was lost, when is the soonest they could actually bring that back? I believe that that, there's a pretty, there's a year or so?
If there were new evidence, I think if they went back and worked with staff and they found out they could bring it back, that would be...
They can't bring it back exactly as, as was. New evidence. And that new evidence may be that they indeed is no, nothing they can do. Because that was the evidence I was considering, was staff's report that there were changes that could be made. Okay. Application HTR one-dash-nineteen is denied. Ordinance twenty-four-dash-nineteen. Connect the first reading of public hearing on ordinance, which, if adopted, would amend the city's comprehensive plan economic development chapter fifteen. City attorney reading the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number twenty-four-nineteen, an ordinance amending the city comprehensive plan. Amending chapter fifteen economic development element, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Give a report.
Evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the second item in our continuation of our comprehensive plan update. It consists of the economic development element update. Changes similar to the, the intergovernmental element are mainly minor text edits consisting of updating information. No policy changes reflecting current status of economic development. No changes to the strategic vision. It has been reviewed internally by both the planning department, economic development director, as well as the city attorney's office. At the May sixth Planning and Zoning Board meeting, the board voted six-zero to recommend the city commission approve the requested comp plan update. Staff recommends city commission conduct a public hearing and approve the first reading of the proposed comp plan amendments. Just a couple minor items that came up in discussion. There's one reference to the, what was, what was called a SWAT analysis of just an assessment of, and there was one item referenced to the hospital as a threat being the hospital relocating outside the city. I'd recommend we strike that if there's any concern there. That was just a remaining item. Probably too specific to need to be in this comp plan, so if there's any concern with that, we can delete it. There was one other reference to whether there's sixteen cities or thirteen cities. There are sixteen cities. There's one reference to thirteen cities in there that specifically have industrial areas. So that's why that was short. It was not in conflict, in my opinion. Those are the only other changes that I'm aware of. Be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I understand we're not voting on this, but, um, well, we're voting to carry it, to go.
Well, no, this one is.
This is a public hearing also?
Right, so this is the transmittal hearing. This should have been under public hearings, so.
Okay. I have concerns that it doesn't go far enough. To me, the review is simply a rehash of what we've had in the past, even going back as far as two thousand and ten on the economic development. I think we should put more emphasis on including improvements for the economic development, to our transportation, our cooperation through the utility commission, and our airport. I just think that we're not moving it forward far enough.
Commissioner Sax?
So, I'd like to just add, we heard testimony from Ms. Sally Gillespie. And her comments were well-taken. The coalition really cares about the quality of our city and how we grow towards the future. I would be interested in seeing a more comprehensive, comprehensive plan. And it, it may even include professional assistance if staff deemed it necessary. And also the inclusion of, of the public's input. So if my gentle colleagues would consider that, maybe we could amend that slightly.
Other? Other comments?
I agree with both of them. But as far as the public comment goes, I mean, it came before P and Z had an opportunity to voice opinion there. So I, I think that we've done our due diligence as far as that goes. You know, they, they have a chance to come to the next meeting, the next hearing, and actually participate then. And they're not subject to the timer straight, so.
End here.
Okay.
I mean, we offer them the opportunity at any time, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? So I, I, I agree, I think, with my colleagues here. I, I, I think staff has done a great job of kind of cleaning up the text. And, but my concern is, do we need to revisit items? Do we need to look at what's not here? We cleaned up what was here. But there's likely things missing. We're in a different day than we were then. So before we move this forward, I, I think it needs a, a more comprehensive look. My concern on that, though, that I've, that I've expressed is, you know, we have laid a lot on staff to accomplish, and they're doing a bang-up job. City attorney, development office particularly, you know, Collins stepping up in a big way. So my concern is, asking staff to do that is probably either going to cause it to be delayed, or we've gotta start assigning priorities, because we're not gonna be able to, to do it all with the staffing levels that we have. So I, I generally, I'm, I'm an outside consultant for a lot of places, but I generally don't like outside consultants, you know, ad nauseam. But I think this may be a case where giving this some time, bringing in some experts that can bring us, you know, those, those peer reviews, looking at high-performing cities and figuring out what they've done. How have they amended their comprehensive plan? What have they targeted? You know, and this one particularly is near and dear to me. Economic development, how we define it, how we need to redefine it. You know, what, what elements we really are putting in place, lacing in the feedback that Tony and I are getting at these meetings that we're having. I just think there's a lot that can be done with this. And I would hate to see us just kind of shuttle this through a process. And I, I, I hear the, my, my esteemed colleague, you know, the, there are chances for the public to participate, and I think we're all disappointed sometimes when we, when we hear that. You know, hey, I wish I could have commented. It's like, you had fifteen chances to comment. But sometimes, I think it's incumbent on us to make sure we've, we've really highlighted something and the importance of it. And, because we may understand it in a way that the, that the public sometimes doesn't. Or maybe they only do once it's been kind of caught and highlighted by, you know, citizen groups like, like the one that spoke. So I would like to see us, I guess, I have one question before I say this, just to clarify. If we, if there were items we needed to clean up in the text, I'm okay with that. But I don't want to see us just put this on, you know, clean that up and, and move on. I'd rather see us delaying this until we can have a chance to, to do it more comprehensively. Is, is there anything in here that needs to be changed because it's causing us angst today? Is there any, is there any issues that are being caused that we need to address in the short term?
Yes, there are. However, I, I think these first couple of elements that we brought forward are somewhat more administrative and just functional. The future land use and other elements that are kind of saving for the end are where more policy changes that you've already made over the past, you know, last year, going to coastal, coastal environmental resiliency and getting into strategic action plan. Our intent was incorporate strategic direction that the commission has already given into the plan, but not to introduce new policies, at least not without your input first.
Yeah, okay. And that makes sense, and all the, and the, the things that we've touched on in LDR. I guess one we haven't touched on a lot really is economic development. And we talked a little bit about it. We've got these programs we're running. But we really haven't had any workshops or major discussion of policy changes or direction changes on, on economic development or ideas or anything. So, yeah, I, I'd like to see us put a little more time so that we can, you know, benchmark our comprehensive plan of what we're doing in economic development, how we define it, and how we, what we're trying to accomplish, so.
Mayor, if I may suggest, what we'll do is, if you could go ahead and approve these little minor changes, and then we'll treat it exactly how we treated the Woodland and then the, then cities. We'll bring back to you, if it's not the next meeting, the meeting after, a proposal from one of the consultants to do a whole major study on comp plan.
Is there, are there limitations? We, we don't preclude ourselves from making further changes if we do that, right? Because I know this whole process that goes up through...
Correct. No, you, you can go back and look at it again.
There's no, there's nothing that says we can only do so many changes within a certain amount of time or anything? I know at some point there was a whole, you can't change it more than once.
Yeah, there was a change in two thousand and eleven. It used to be you could only do two per year. But in two thousand and eleven, they got rid of that limitation.
Okay. So in theory, we can keep going back to the well if we had to?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So with that being said, I like the idea of, we can approve these, but definitely, we're not checking this box, to me. Any other, yes?
Just, just for clarification, the desire is to hire the consultant, not just for economic development, but for the remainder, the entirety of the comprehensive plan.
That would be my desire, yes.
That is not my desire.
I didn't think it was.
Yes.
I think if staff writes it, they own it. They have to live by it, so I would rather them be the responsible parties for this.
Mr. Mayor?
Possible, but, you know. So I, I would rather it be done by staff, at a staff level.
Okay.
Well, we do, we do have a further resource. We have the economic development, the mayor's economic development advisory board.
It's not called that anymore.
Oh, that's what it was called when I was on it.
Yeah. The mayor was on it then, too.
Had a feeling.
Looking for another one.
Uh, I think they're a good resource. They're very knowledgeable in it. And I think if we express our concerns to them, they might be able to put in an extra meeting or two. And within a few months, have us fine-tune this and really bring it up to date. They know our major concerns, which I've just spoke to. And I think we could do it without expending any more money.
All right, Mayor. I, I promised myself I was, I was gonna stay out of this one. But...
But you can't.
I can.
All right.
I think there are citizens groups, or a citizen group that has clearly stated what they want, is my understanding. They want a comprehensive look at the comprehensive plan from an outside person. I think we need more discussion on that, and I don't think we can decide, decide it tonight, and here's why. I think we need more discussion on that, and I don't think we can decide, decide it tonight, and here's why. If the outside group wants us to look at the comprehensive plan, the entire document in depth, and to make changes, I think that we need a technical expert to assist us on that. So if we go down that road, I think that we, or Joe Blow sitting in the audience, talking to one of us, telling us what we should be telling staff to do, that concerns me. So I, if we're going to go down this road, I think it would make sense to make sure that we had a technical expert advising us on the changes that we're going to have to make, not necessarily just citizen input, because, because the comprehensive plan is such a technical document.
I couldn't agree more. And that's where I think that outside expertise comes in. And, and no slight to the Economic Development Advisory Board, but I don't know how many of them written the comprehensive plan for a city. It's a very specific skill set to be able to, you know, benchmark, you know, to benchmark appropriately. And the hardest thing is to, is to see what's not there. It's easy to look at what's there and tweak, but the hardest thing is to, is to see the blind spot. And, and that's where I think we need, we need that technical expert you're talking about, the outsider's perspective that sees the blind spots of New Smyrna Beach as we're trying to develop in a sustainable way. It can bring the expertise from somewhere that perhaps has even done it, and done it successfully. And if we just continue to look internally and try to find those answers, I think we're going to keep coming up with the same things.
I don't think we have an answer tonight. I think, I don't want to just dive all in. I think that both sides make good points, but I also think we need to kind of sit back here, take a, take a look, take a step back and look at, what do we, what does the community really want us to do, and what is the best way for us to move forward with that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just chime in, if we look at other elements of the comprehensive plan, like future land use, we had an issue come up with floodplain and the building of homes and other structures in the floodplain. And we kind of backed off on floodplain. But yet, there's, in my mind, there's a lingering doubt that, are we doing the wisest thing? And I know our staff, it seemed like you were offering caution for building in the floodplain. But I think we, we backed off and we're willing to take a look at it later. So it's certain elements like that, I wonder if it's a good idea to have an objective outside view, not telling us what to do, not telling our staff what to do, but offering their thoughts. That, that's where I'm coming from on that, and I think that's where the Coalition might be coming from, but I'm only guessing. But that's, that's the caution I'm trying to bring here, an extra set of eyes, or one pair of eyes.
Well, I think it's very clear that when we don't do what the people want us to do, then it becomes a problem. So it's not just an extra set of eyes. It's, we need a, if we're going to do this, we need a technical way of doing it with the proper people.
I agree.
But the main thing, Commissioner McGurk, when I suggested to get the consultant, you have somebody who specializes in comp plans, so he's working for us. So he's going to give us the best advice in terms of what the scope it is, so.
Right. I think, and that's the point I'm trying to make. I hope I'm clear.
And, and I think, I just want to be clear on a couple of things. And one is, my opinion on this was, was formed before the comments tonight, but those happen to be in line with my position. I also think, given the time to concentrate on nothing but this, we have staff that can knock this out of the park. But interweaved with the daily nuances of the job, this is going to be a backburner-type item, that it's going to be very hard, but it takes time to go out and read 10 other cities' entire, you know, 500-page comprehensive plans, to look for that nugget of an idea that is, hey, that's really cool, that's working well for them. We need to lace that into, we need to lace that into ours. That, we don't have the time to do that and solve all the other daily operational challenges. We have new leadership in almost every single department head position, in many key positions. So I know Brian's got a list of things that he's, you know, working through. So that's my, that's my concern. I don't think, it's not that we don't have the skill set, it's that, do we have, do we want to take the time for that? And I would like to see us collapse the timeframes and, and bring in that outside expertise, so. So what we have tonight is to, this was a public hearing, right, so we need to pause for some public comments. Okay, let's do that. Let's pause. Any members of the public wish to speak on this item? All right, saying that, anything else I need to do on the public hearing? I think I'm good. All right. So we have, I think what staff has asked us to do, and City Attorney's clarified it doesn't block, block anything, is we can approve the changes that have been suggested tonight. That doesn't preclude us from doing nothing or considering a proposal for further action at a future meeting. So it really leaves all the rest of the options on the table, and we can go ahead and clean up the text as it's been presented tonight. Is one option for the Commission to consider. Yes?
So is it your intent to go through these and clean them up text-wise, and the stuff that you are obviously outdated or recognized, and then do an overall encompassing review? I mean, I would be in favor of that. If we can have, you know, if that was your intent, or are you saying that this is it and done, and we'll go on to the next chapter, or?
The intent would be to bring each element through one by one, kind of vet it, review it, get comments, bring it up, up to speed. These particular ones didn't need that much detail and review, because they don't really affect, they're important, but they don't affect policy and land development decisions and things like affordable housing that we would get into. So, so yes, the intent would be to bring them through one by one, review by staff, you know, our experts, planning and zoning, public input, then to the Commission, then we transmit it to the state. I specifically directed our staff, and they've done a great job of it, of knowing new policy initiatives that haven't already been expressed by the Commission. We're updating what's already been intended. And we, intent was to carry that through to the end. Now, if you want to bring in a consultant to really look at those policies and add, we can do that, and there's a significant cost to that, but we would still need your input of what those policy directions are so they could properly implement in the comp plan.
So said another way, just so I'm clear, if we hadn't had any of this discussion, we'd just approved this on reading and moved on, we wouldn't have been revisiting this particular item. It would have been, that would have been the last way to touch this.
You'd see it again.
Yeah, but I'm saying, no other, wasn't like we were polishing it off, and then, yeah, next June, we were going to bring this up again. This was it. When was the last time this was, this comp plan was touched? Wasn't it like '07, '08?
I think it was 2010, 2011.
2010, 2011, right, yeah.
There's something called an ear, which is done periodically. Planning and zoning looks at it, then it comes to the Commission.
Yeah.
It's changed, changed a little bit in process now. It's not as formalized as it was, where we do a formal environment, or evaluation and appraisal report. It's more internal. You used to have to do that report and transmit that report and get that approved, and then do the amendments. So it's a little more streamlined now. Some more process, though.
Okay. What's the Commission's pleasure? Looking for a motion. I'd say a motion to approve this item and then ask staff to bring us back some options that we can consider for a more comprehensive view. I mean, if the cost is prohibitive, you know, that's something we can discuss at that time. We truly don't have enough information to discuss much further than what we do tonight, and then asking staff to bring us back some more information, in my opinion, so. Consider a motion to that effect. I didn't make the motion. I proposed it. You could say so moved. I think that, that would work. All right, and then anybody want to second that?
Second.
City Clerk.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, thank you, Brian. Okay, next items up are all first readings. And then we have some boards and commissions. Okay, I'm going to get through these. Ordinance 25-19, conduct first reading, which if adopted would amend the COZ. City Attorney, read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance, ordinance number 2519, an ordinance amending the land development regulations, amending Article 5, zoning districts, Section 50402, specific regulations by district, COZ, corridor overlay zone, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
All right, second reading, a public hearing will be held at the regular Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Gentlemen, I ask on these, if you have major changes, bring them up. If you have minor things, you can talk to that directly with staff or bring it up here, but trying to get through these as quick as can. Ordinance 2619, first reading, ordinance which if adopted, amend the land development regulations by adding special vet parking. City Attorney, read it by title only.
Ordinance number 2619, an ordinance amending the city land development regulations, amending Article 6, development design and improvement standards, Section 60409, off-street parking, loading and driveways, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
All right, second reading, and public hearing will be held at the regular Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Ordinance 2719, conduct first reading, which if adopted would annex approximately 7.9 acres of property located at Creeksure Trail. City Attorney, read it by title only.
Ordinance number 2719, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, 7.9 plus or minus acres of property located east of Creeksure Trail between Leitha Street and Turnbull Bay Road, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 3, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, second reading, and public hearing will be held at the regular Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Ordinance 28-19, City Attorney.
Ordinance number 28-19, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of 7.9 plus or minus acres of land located east of Creeksure Trail between Leitha Street and Turnbull Bay Road from county rural to city residential estate, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Okay, second reading, and public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Will be held at the regular City Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Yes?
I have a concern.
Okay.
Somewhere in these various, 29 and 28, there's reference to a PUD out there. And as long as we're changing this just for the zoning and not amending that PUD, then I'm okay with it. If it's amending the PUD, there's standards in the PUD such as ones that might relate to wetlands where we don't want to just add it to the other PUD. That's my concern.
It's rezoning to PUD, but they will be coming back with changes to their master development agreement, which you will be able to see all of that. So they're, they have a, another application in the pipeline, and they were going to take all of that and address it in the MDA, so you would be able to do that at that time.
And that as an amendment to the PUD, we could then bring up any further changes to the PUD that we would like to see.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance number 29-19, conduct the first reading, ordinance would rezone approximately 7.9 acres located on Creeksure Trail. City Attorney.
Ordinance number 29-19, an ordinance rezoning 7.9 plus or minus acres of property located east of Creeksure Trail between Leitha Street and Turnbull Bay Road from county A2A Rural Agriculture Airport to city PUD, planned unit development, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, second reading, and public hearing will be held at the regular City Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Ordinance 30-19, City Attorney.
Ordinance number 3019, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, amending Chapter 66, solid waste to create Section 66-112 penalties, providing for public hearing, providing for codification, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, second read, yep, let me just read this so I don't forget. Second reading, and public hearing will be held at the regular Commission meeting scheduled for June 11th, 2019. Vice Mayor.
This has been an ongoing issue that code enforcement has been dealing with for quite some time. And I think it's going to finally resolve that issue, hopefully. But I would like to see something like this also apply to the building permit application process. This allows for a higher fine or a stiffer fine, where we can even find possibly the owner of the property. So if we could look at something along these lines, I just don't feel that these individuals that are building structures without permits knowing better, you know, a $200 fine is sufficient. So I think that maybe we, if we go along these lines and look at, at our building permit fees structure, then, you know, that may resolve some of those issues in the future.
If the contractors, and they, they are repeated, typically they take him to the building trade board as well.
Right.
Okay. Just as a precursor, don't want to discuss it at all, but just putting it out there. I've had a local vendor talk to me about this and asking staff to present a summary. The concern was that it was overly cumbersome and onerous paperwork kind of related to this. They were perfectly fine with it. They got what we're trying to accomplish. So just trying to validate whether or not there's validity to that, and we'll bring that back to you all. Boards and commissions, accept the voluntary resignation on the Airport Advisory Board of Member Robert Perry, and consider elevating alternate member Janet Tanoco to active member status, and appointing a member to serve for the remainder of the term. So motion to accept the resignation of Member Robert Perry.
So moved.
Second.
Johnny?
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. All right, we have three folks that have submitted their applications for consideration.
Like to nominate James Dempsey.
We have a nomination for James Dempsey. Other nominations?
I would like to nominate Mitchell.
Okay. Any other nominations? I mean, it's just one other person. Anybody want to nominate? All right, hearing done, we have two nominations. Johnny, going to pass down some ballots?
Yes, sir.
We really didn't take motion on the, on the elevation of Tanoco. We probably need to do that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. We'll do this first, and then we'll. Who did you nominate? Okay.
Result of the ballot is Mayor Owen voted for Mr. Mitchell. Vice Mayor Hartman voted for Mr. Dempsey. Commissioner Sacks voted for Mr. Mitchell. Commissioner Colletti voted for Mr. Mitchell. Commissioner McGurk for Mr. Dempsey.
Okay, by a vote of three to two, Mr. Mitchell's been appointed. We also need to either appoint or elevate the alternate Janet Tanoco or make another nomination.
I'll make that motion.
To elevate Janet Tanoco?
Yes.
Okay, done. Second.
Second. Discussion, do we know what our attendance history is?
I didn't receive that.
We do have a.
Over the past year, alternate member Tanoco attended every meeting but one.
Okay, thank you. If no other discussion, Johnny, if you can roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Do we need to appoint another alternate? You can bring that back to the next meeting.
I thought Mitchell was the alternate member. So we did three things. We accepted the voluntary resignation, we elevated Ms. Tanoco, and we appointed Mitchell as the alternate.
So we put him, okay, got it, got it, got it. Thank you, sorry. All right, and we have the CDBG, if you recall, the last meeting. And we have the CDBG, if you recall, the last meeting, we talked through this, we got some attendance records, and note, there were several that had four absences. Again, I'd point out, I've been at these meetings, I've met these folks. They have a true desire to serve, are hard to serve. I think they're going through some other issues that are, that are hindering them, so. With that, we need to reappoint and appoint some members. We can do it en masse in the reappointments, maybe? It's probably the fastest way.
I don't know if that works.
No, all right, we'll just do individual nominations then.
I would like to nominate Mr. Timothy Washington.
You know, it'd be handy if we could just do a voice vote on the nomination real quick in cases like this. All right, we have a nomination for Timothy Washington. Any other nominations? We have to make seven appointments, gentlemen. Right? Yeah. Seven appointments.
Six would be members and one would be a non-voting member?
It's my understanding, yes.
Let's do the non-voting members separate.
Okay, I'm okay with that. So we have to make six nominations.
Nominate Mr. Simpson.
Okay, Mr. Simpson, Donald Simpson. We have two nominations, we need at least six.
I'll nominate Kristi Bell.
Okay. Johnny, I think you noted that if they weren't on this list, that means they had attended all the meetings, right?
I'm sorry, sir.
If they weren't on this list that you gave, put in the email, they had attended all the, all the meetings, is that?
Uh, yes, sir, three members had absences, Member Devoe, Member Haines, Member Wadley.
Got it, okay. So we have three nominations, Bell, Simpson, Washington.
Mildred White.
Four nominations. Jake, any nominations?
Nominate Ms. Simpson.
That would put a husband and wife on the board, I would recommend we don't do that.
No, that's not.
I'll nominate Sabrina Smith. That's five. And somebody can make a second nomination.
I've already made two.
Okay.
I'll make another one. Sylvia Devoe.
Okay, any other nominations? We are at the six that we need. Hearing no other nominations, take them, have a motion to accept the appointment of these six members, Kristi Bell, Sylvia Devoe, Sabrina Smith, Donald Simpson, and Timothy Washington to serve on the CDBG. We will make a separate motion on the alternate.
So move.
Give me a second.
Second.
Johnny.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes. City Attorney, you clarified, having the spouse serve as a non-voting member is, is not an issue, right?
Correct.
Okay, it might actually be convenient because they can, they can talk. All right, do I have a nomination for the alternate?
Mr. Thomas.
I'm not seeing a Mr. Thomas.
I don't think Mr. Thomas had elected to be reconsidered.
Yeah, the available options are Rhonda Hayes, Jaclyn Wadley, who are current members that had four absences, Judith Simpson, and Linda Palmer. All right, I nominate Judith Simpson. Any other nominations? Hearing none, you have a motion to accept the nomination of Judith Simpson to the alternate member of the CDBG.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Johnny.
Commissioner Colodey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks.
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
Yes. Okay. Congratulations all who were appointed. Mayor and Commission reports, Commissioner Colo, Vice Mayor Hartman. Begin with you.
No, I'll just be brief. Memorial service, I think, was again phenomenal this year. I thank staff for all that they did, leisure services in the Brandon Center. The indoor is, was much appreciated as it was, what, ninety-six out there? So we, I certainly thank you for that. I think everybody enjoyed it, I liked the format that we had this year where the reefs were already up there. So I agree, the mayor's speech was also top-notch, so I think that's two in a row for him. So he's an elegant speaker, so I appreciate that. We attended the Black, or the Mary Harold Museum's annual scholarship awards. They, interestingly enough, they were lacking in, in participants. They only had one person actually apply for the scholarship. So I think that's something that we can maybe do through neighborhood council, maybe, is get the word out there a little bit more, certainly help them with, with doing that.
Was it Amon Washington, was it Tim Washington's son?
No.
No?
So so, I mean, that was really good, they were able to, they did quite a bit of fundraising this year, so they were able to give some previous recipients, recipients some scholarships. So it was all greatly appreciated, but to see those young people there, you know, and to be able to get those scholarships was really amazing. Young, there's one young gentleman who's probably gonna apply next year and wants to be a cardiac surgeon, so my hat's off to him. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McGurk.
Thank you, Mayor, just want to echo Vice Mayor's thoughts on the Memorial Day service. It was absolutely outstanding, and it is the Memorial Day and Veterans Day are my two favorite things to attend in this city. And I also want to wish the Vice Mayor a very happy birthday. I believe he is officially a card-carrying member of AARP. No, I think that's like fifty, right? You're, you're officially collecting social security. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Sacks.
First off, I want to send a reverend thanks to our vets. We really greatly appreciate it. Driver, I think, is, no, possibly lieutenant at this point, Mark Green, I think his name is, at the bagpipes, always lends a
I think it's Chris.
Chris Diamond, I'm sorry, I apologize to Chris, but he's awesome on the bagpipes.
He's fire.
And he always brings a tear and a smile when he plays for us.
It's very moving.
It was moving, yes. Also kudos to the Oceans for Hope group, if I said their title correctly, Oceans of Hope. And they offer assistance to people who have challenges getting to the ocean. And they help them surf and swim and do all those great activities that we able-bodied people can do without thinking about it. So kudos to them and their efforts, I really appreciate it. Also to Mr. Harold and the Board of the Historical Museum for their effort to provide scholarships. And now, something very important, and I may ask for the assistance of Brian Field. Something that I've been trying to get for our city is those traffic lights for the fire stations. And we may be closer to getting them, I hope. But what I found out was since they meet the warrants, I'd like to step that up, that process. We could be funded and ready to start on one of them, fifty, Station fifty-two on B-side, in twenty twenty. And I'm hoping to get the other one, Station fifty, our headquarters, since our city is growing so quickly out west, I'd like those firefighters to get there quicker. And with a traffic light, they can do that. So what I've found out is that through traffic impact fees, we may have enough money to substantially fund a traffic light for Station fifty. And so I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to help us through that process and get us to have two traffic lights for two fire stations very soon. So can I get a second for discussion and possibly some assistance from staff?
So I'm trying to remember, here's my notes. So when we had the four o'clock workshop, we talked about the local roadway plan. Number fifty-two was number six on the ranking, three hundred to five hundred K, but we were possibly gonna get some funding with, from TPO, I think it was for that. So we're gonna lean on this guy, and we expect nothing less than excellent funding. But that, I think, so we just have to let that play out, there's nothing we can do to accelerate that at this point, right?
Correct, what I, what I mentioned to Commissioner Sacks was that if, if the desire was to move him right now, that
We could pay for it out of impact fee funds.
Yeah, or budget it for next year.
Yeah, so, and that's for number fifty. I mean, for number fifty-two, we can do that as well, but then we'd possibly be leaving TPO money on the table.
Yes.
For number fifty, we could accelerate it. If we wait, we just put it in some other cycle, right? Is that?
Correct.
For some other grant funding?
For, for the one at headquarters, you, you could budget impact fees to fund design and/or construction. That, or, you know, or we could wait on that, that was the discussion today.
But keep in mind too that with the intersection improvement on Mission and forty-four, a traffic light is supposed to be right there at forty-four and canal business. So right there where the fire station is.
No, the fire station's further up, yeah.
That DOT did warrant the signal without the improvements.
Yeah, no, they did, now, the question is now just how do we pay for it? And the question now is just how do we pay for it? So I would suggest that, and we have the budget discussion coming up, and we have the impact fee, I mean, I guess we're gonna have a discussion, I'd prefer than to have it right now. I'd like to have it as an agenda item, because I don't know the balance of the impact fee funds, I don't know what the priorities are for the rest of them. So I, I'm okay with having a discussion on this. I think number fifty-two, we let that play out. I don't think we need to touch on, we let it play out. I think if we want to have a discussion on a, if you can find some space on a future agenda, have a discussion on number fifty, provide us with the potential cost, here's two or three ways we might could pay for it, and here's some other funding that we might could get if we waited, because that's the decision that we have to make, is do we want to roll the dice and pay for it out of pocket, or wait and potentially get other funding? And then we'll try to put this item to bed and make a, a once and for all decision whether we're waiting or paying for it now. Does that please the commission?
Should I make a motion?
I think we're okay, as long as nobody objects to just putting it on some, a future agenda. And I say some future agenda, within the next couple agendas, not, not a long way away.
Thank you, my colleagues, thank you, Brian.
Just to clarify, I'm sorry, just, is the desire to have it on a future agenda or part of our budget discussions coming up on those agendas?
I mean, I think that's probably gonna be one of the same, honestly, because the budget discussions are coming up.
Yeah, my preference is toward the budget.
I, I think that's what makes the most sense to me as well, so. I mean, I agree, we're, I know you're willing to move.
We're getting halfway there.
We're, we're getting so close, so. You'd put a motion on the table, would you consider removing that motion?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Still your time.
Yes, and something just as important, I received a very kind letter from the commissioner of the city of Port Orange, I'm sorry, Ormond Beach, I'm sorry, guys, it's late. Ormond Beach, and Susan Persis. And they just made an ordinance regarding tethering of animals. We just made an ordinance regarding the tethering of animals. Theirs is an enhanced ordinance. I would like to enter for our consideration and make a motion that we look at their ordinance, it has a few features that we can add. It is an enhanced, again, it's an enhanced version, it has a few more bullet points that would protect animals a little more, points like puppies, if we would consider puppies. They have considered not tethering puppies, and there's a few other items in there. If we could have staff review that and, and bring it back and enhance that, that tethering law. Because I, I think that's direction that she would also like the county to move in, and all the cities do the same. So I would like us to consider that as well.
All right, so the motion made was to basically bring back up the, the tethering for, for reconsideration based on the, what's been done in Ormond and possibly other cities.
Yes, that's the most, thank you.
So we, we had passed some tethering ordinances, we had none, we had zero. It was perfectly legal to do whatever you wanted, we passed some ordinances, put some things in place. So the question is, do we revisit that now?
Would it need to go back to animal control board? Do the whole process?
Back through.
Yes. So I would second that, I don't have a problem with Megan looking at, at what they did and see if it's something that she thought was
Okay.
would enhance ours.
All right.
You know.
We have a motion in a second to reconsider that item.
And these are minor changes.
Any other discussion? Nope. I'm good with it. I mean, I'd like, I'd prefer to maybe wait a little, put a little more time between it, but I'm okay with reconsidering it, if they're minor changes. I always wonder about enforcement, but
Exactly.
we'll have that discussion then. We can't enforce littering, you know, I mean, I say can't, we can, but it's just, those are tough things to enforce. You have to catch it in the act, I mean, it's just so tough, so. But it feels good to have it on the books. We'll take a vote, Johnny.
Commissioner McGurk.
No, because I don't think that the change has addressed the issue we did not. The letter did not address why we did not adopt a tethering ordinance.
Vice Mayor Hartman.
Yes.
Commissioner Colodey.
I would prefer getting other issues addressed, but I'll vote yes to look into it.
Commissioner Sacks.
Yes.
Mayor Owen.
I, I'll vote yes, I agree with Commissioner Colodey, it's a, it's, I think we've made a giant step by putting something on the books, it's a pretty, it's a, it's not my top priority because I, I don't know that we'll be able to do very much, but I'm defer to you to.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your consideration. I'll, I'll provide those to our city attorney and see if they're feasible. I think it's just a, you know, a few nice changes we can make to enhance that. Since I did oppose tethering, with those allowances, I would be more comfortable, thank you.
And just for clarification, I'll make sure Megan gets those and that she runs it through the people who really know the animal control ordinance.
Yep. I'd like Chief's opinion on enforcement as well. Okay. Any others? Commissioner Colodey?
Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate the presentation that Commissioner Denny's made. I appreciate the work the county's done, and I know they've worked very closely with our police department. We survived the last weekend, which was very hot, had high tides, and everything went as well as it could. Our neighborhoods were flooded with cars parked in them, but we're a beach community. I don't think the county is going far enough in helping us deal with, as they said, out-of-town day trippers coming into our town. They have acknowledged there's not enough room to park everybody on the beach, yet they've also told me personally, they're not gonna commit any more money to parking within New Smyrna Beach. I think they can't have it both ways. I, they, I think they should participate in a review of the parking guidelines they have as to what they contribute to. I think they should work with us on a, a truly automated notification system for people who are coming into this town, so they can be aware well ahead of time what they're going to face when they get here. I realize that we have our, our portable message boards out, but there's the coordination that's necessary. If, if those message boards can be made more timely, more automated, I think we'd be far ahead of the game, and I think we should broach that with the county as a commission. I spoke as an individual, and I spoke with her, but I would like to see us take a little bit more aggressive approach with the county. When our Flagler study is done, it should lay out really what we're experienced to. And I assure Commissioner Sacks can help us out with the effect on Zone Two along the beach. We need help. We can take care of our own, but it's everybody else that we're taking care of. care of our own, but it's everybody else that we're taking care of. That'll do it for my comments.
All right. Well said. You know, I could talk about many things, but I'd, I'd like to just comment on really one. And I don't remember seeing anybody else there except for some staff, but the Razzle Dazzle event of, what was that, a week ago now? Really, really fantastic event. I think that could become one of the, that was the first one, right? That was the first annual. I'm, I'm looking at Nancy back there. She played a huge role in that. I think it's kind of been her, her baby, probably a lot of other people to play, to thank for that. But I think that could become a premier event. I mean, it was almost a packed house. First time out, tickets were sold, money was raised for all the right reasons. Youth in the community got involved in something they're passionate about. I mean, there were future careers that unfolded before our eyes. Such a great event. I hope we can build on that momentum. It's got all the support that, that you can have from me, if there's anything I can do for it as we ramp up for next year. So, really, really excited to, to see that grow. And thank you, Nancy and staff, and, and all the community partners that were involved in, in making that a reality. And I encourage you all, next year, be there. It's, it's going to be the place to, it's a place to be on, on that Sunday. So, attended a lot of other, a lot of other events, you know, graduation season is upon us. Had a chance to attend some scholarship presentations, the honors session at, at the high school, the band scholarship dinner. You know, we're producing such great people, such great future leaders are, are coming out of New Smyrna. Every time I have a chance to speak to them, I'm, I'm enticing them, I'm challenging them to go out, spread their wings, but bring that talent, bring that ability back to New Smyrna Beach that, that raised you, informed you, and help us, help us progress and, and proceed. So, with that, that's all I have. City managers' report. Anything to call out?
I just want to point out, Ma, that you have June 10th, you have a joint meeting with the Terrible Creek Committee, and then your regular city commission is on the 11th, where you could be discussing the item as well, right after the, the joint meeting. The insurance services, they have ranked our city now reclassified to six, which we went down from seven to six, which means you get 5% reduction on your flood insurance.
For the ISO, ISO rating?
Five percent. So, it's, it's a good move for, for us, and thank the staff. The, I met with the CEO with the utilities, with Brian and John, and their staff as well to kick off the, convert accepting tags. Very good meeting, and we decided to have a consultant to look at it and have a, we will join, have a, share the costs of the consultant. So, this is a good kickoff meeting for that purpose, so we're moving forward on it. The City Hall annex projects, the bid opening is on the 11th. We'll find out how it come and come out. You have the tracker and your reports. If you want to look at them, just make sure that you're taking care of your items. And I'll be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Collett on his report? Okay. City Clerk's report?
No reports.
City Attorney's report?
Yes, I'm looking for direction from you all on the interim city manager contract. I've, I've pulled some various samples, and I've looked at what has been done in the past, and Collet disagree with me if, if I'm incorrect on any of this. But there's, for this interim contract, you know, the direction I'm looking for are, you know, is it a finite term? Is it open-ended salary? It looks like when you compare kind of some of the benefits he's entitled to as a department head, you know, in terms of retirement, leave time, health insurance, a lot of that stays the same. So, really, there's just a few terms that I would need direction on. The other thing you all need to consider is whether you want to delegate negotiating to one of you, or if you just have me come back with a draft with some blanks, and you guys do it at the day, and negotiate it together. You all need to have that discussion.
Okay. All right. So, Collett has been in the role now for two weeks. Survived, survived two weeks, done a great job. And my thoughts on this, and I'll open it up for discussion. You know, my discussions with Collett are, he's, he's interested in the position. Doesn't have, he's got more of his career behind him than head of him, but is, is interested in the position, unlike, I think, the last time we were in this situation as a city. Has right at nearly 30 years' experience, not just in city management or city government, but in New Smyrna Beach. So, in acknowledgement of those things, what I've seen work well in cases like this, I, I think we owe the person a, a chance for us to make an evaluation of, of that performance. I would like to see us have a finite contract time, you know, six months, pick, pick a number, a, a finite contract time where he serves his interim, and then we come back and evaluate then whether we're all happy with the arrangement and, and proceed forward. So, that doesn't cover every detail, but just does a jumping off point. Any other comments? I'll start with the, maybe the, you want to start it? Vice Mayor?
I agree with you on the, talk to Collet, the six-month time period, I think, would be a reasonable amount of time. He was comfortable with that. I'm certainly comfortable with that. I was under the impression that he already got an out-of-class pay, but found out later that he was exempt from that. So, I would assume he was already getting a bump in pay. So, I, I don't have a problem with increasing his pay and also the car allowance. I, I think that with the six months, that puts us into the new budget year. So, when we negotiate, like a permanent-type contract, we could, you know, fix some more things at that point in time. I would, however, though, in any, in any contract that we do do going forward, that there be at least an annual evaluation in some form, whether it's a short yes or no, or, you know, meets all expectations, that sort of thing. I think that we need to have some kind of input going forward. So, those are my thoughts on it.
Okay.
You know, there's-
Speak freely.
You know, I, I mean, I would be comfortable with the 10% bump from now until then, and then, and the, and the car allowance. I think, certainly don't think he wants the city car to drive, so.
I've seen his car. I don't think he does.
I've been driving by a couple of us.
Yeah.
I need you so.
And whatever we do is retroactive, back to the day that we appointed him. So, those are my thoughts.
Commissioner McGurk?
I think I pretty much agree with what I've heard so far. You say 10%. I thought we would move him up to what the city manager was making. Is the 10%, does the 10% bring him to that, or where'd you, or where's the 10% come from?
Just a number off the top of my head.
Okay.
I, I just did the math. It looks like it would be still below what Pam was making at the time.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, city attorney, you, anyway, I'm comfortable, I, I would say bring him up to, he's doing the job of a city manager. I would say bring him up to what Pam was making. I'm comfortable with the six months, and then we evaluate him. The car allowance, I'm fine with. You know, if he's doing the position, we should pay him for the position. I don't think we cut him on the cheap just for the six months, but, you know, whatever people feel. It's fair.
Commissioner Sacks?
I concur with most of my colleagues' comments.
Talking to Mike.
Sorry. Here we go. I concur with most of my colleagues' comments. I was just wondering, Collet, if, or if anybody would know the record of the last time you served as interim, what was your bump in pay then, adjusted to the cost of living in today's dollars?
At the time, they just paid me what they were paying the city manager with, with the benefits.
Yes. I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Commissioner Colletti?
I would increase the pay to the city manager's last pay. I have no problem with that either, which is greater than 10%, but I think it's fair. It's not like we need a break-in period. An evaluation after six months would be fine. However, on evaluations, I would like to see an evaluation of some type of our city clerk, city attorney, as well as city manager, the three personnel that work for us directly. That's what I would like to see. So, right now, I wouldn't, I'd rather have that type of decision made to reflect all three positions, and I don't think it should affect the interim manager position at this point. Six months may be a little short, in my opinion, but we could also raise it.
We could always extend it at the end of six months, yeah. The, the notion was that just gives us a, a finite point. I mean, I think we'll also have some, I haven't seen the final yet, but we could also have some clauses for, you know, early escape clauses as well. But that just kind of gives us a, we're going to reassess at this point and figure out the next step. So-
For the purpose of basic negotiations, yes, I agree.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I have, I have no concerns. I'll tell you, I've compared what we, we were paying our city manager with what I was able to see that every other city manager in this, in the county was being paid, considering as many of the benefits as I could kind of piece together. And I think we're in line for a city of our size and complexity. Also acknowledging that interim, interim positions are hard, because, you know, that there's, having served as, as an interim a few times, it's, it's a, it's a tough road to navigate. You're often not backfilling the person, the position you're leaving, so you're really pulling double duty during the time. So, I'm, I'm comfortable with everything we proposed. I like where we're going with the evaluation. I concur with my other commissioners. I think how we do that is important. You know, there's, there's something to be said for positive organizational behavior, and, and, you know, we can do things that can really be great, and we can do things that can impact, you know, us negatively. So, I think how we do that is important, but I certainly am supportive of it. I've got some ideas that I would love to talk through at, at some point as we, as we consider that, you know, 360 evaluation type stuff. There's a lot of different tools that can be used. I would challenge my commissioners. I will tell you this. I, I don't hold back feedback from staff. I, I think they would, the ones that are here would tell you, I mean, the ones that report to us. If, if I'm overly pleased, I'll be the first to call some, you know, one of the master meetings, say, hey, really, really appreciate the extra effort on that meeting. You did a great job. If I'm not, I'll be the first to call and would say, hey, I feel like for, for this commissioner, I'd love to see you do a little more of this. So, I know we have to evaluate them as a body. We hired and found them as a body, but I make sure, I'm trying to give them feedback along the way, and I hope that we would all do that to some degree. You don't have to wait and let that build up to one big evaluation. So, anyway, that's my, my thoughts on that. But I'm very comfortable with, with the six-month being raised, the manager's last pay, not anything in the, in the separation agreement, but just what it was before any of that, including the car allowance and any other benefits that would, that would be applicable. I think it's just a car allowance, right? You said all the other ones are the same.
Mayor, not to interrupt?
There may be, I guess, the part I won't know is, like, life insurance, disability insurance, those types of things. I don't know if, if we-
Were we paying those-
Drafted as if this, you know, essentially, we could remove the interim title after six months, or-
No, let's just keep it, I, I would propose we keep it simple, stick to the pay, the car. We'll figure out the other, I mean, those are pretty ancillary benefits. They're pretty minor at that point. So-
Unless he already has them. That would be my one caveat. Yeah.
Yeah, we wouldn't strip anything away. That would be the intention, by any stretch.
And the others are usually-
Hang on, I want to go to Commissioner McGurk.
Move to extend the meeting to 10:30?
Have we passed that time? I thought it was, if at 10:30, we have to move to 11, I believe it is. I think we're good until 10:30. I think so.
I think I did before.
Yeah. And you did the same thing last time.
I did it last time.
You did it last?
I'm, I'm pretty sure we have until 10:30, and then we have to-
I'll remove my motion. Sorry about that, Mayor.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, I threw the 10% out there, because that's what's in the policy procedure, so I don't have any problem with going up to the current salary. The other question would be the retirement benefits. I mean-
He's in the FRS pension, so I believe it'll just directly tie to it, his interim salary.
All right. With that, I'd consider a motion to have the city attorney draft. Do we need to have that come back to us? Are we comfortable with just?
I think, so I'll get a nice draft. I'll distribute it to you all. We could kind of treat it like the rules of procedure, where you guys give me your comments, tell me yea or nay, and then if I have conflict between you all, we can discuss the conflict here and figure out what it's supposed to be.
All right. So, consider an ordinance to have city attorney draft that, bring it, distribute it to the commission, bring it back to the commission, appointing Collet as acting city manager for a period of six months effective from the date that is approved?
Effective May 15th.
You want it effective May 15th? Okay.
Well, we need to go back and-
I was going to get to the pay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then, I would say, though, we could go ahead and authorize the, the adjustment in pay to be made now. I mean, effective as of May 15th, but go ahead and put that in place. I don't want them waiting until, I mean, it could take us a couple more meetings to, if we have to hash out something.
Okay, so the six-month period will begin the date of approval, June-
Date of approval of the contract.
And then the pay will go retro.
Pays retro from May 15th, but HR can start that at the next pay cycle, is what I would like to see.
We need a motion. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, the, yeah, so all the pay adjustments, which would be the pay adjustment and the car allowance. So, that was a complex motion. Anybody need clarity on that motion? If not, we had somebody that made that motion.
I made that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Wait a tie for a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. City Clerk?
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner Colletti?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Collet, I apologize. I should have paused and given you a chance to apply on that, I guess, but I thought of it right when we started voting.
Just one other thing that I had, I, I've been collecting different samples of interim contracts, and there are provisions that allow him, reserves that are right for him to go back to assistant city manager if things, if he doesn't want to continue on, or vice for, if, if the commission doesn't want to go that route. So, I thought it would be good to include that provision.
I am in favor of that clause.
Yes.
Nobody should be punished for skipping a-
Collet, when do you enter the drawup?
I could enter August 30th.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think that's the last discussion we need to have around that topic. It is the last one we need to have tonight. It's not the last one in general. Some of the other things that came up, you know, if we need to do any interim backfilling of positions, you know, assistant city manager moving forward. So, I'll challenge Collet to bring us back some ideas, and we'll, we'll bring that back up. If no other business before the commission tonight, this meeting is adjourned in the nick of time.